The best of me is which council member is dressed up the most?
Okay.
Oh, he has to have a tie on.
Right after he said, "What about all?"
I'm thinking about going full Jim Dahl with the Hawaiian shirts and forget, forget the jacket.
We should do a...
Order?
Is it time?
Yes, it's time.
I have 30 seconds.
It is calling the meeting of April 16th, 2024 to order, and I will note that all council members are present. First item on the agenda is closed session performance evaluation of city attorney pursuant to government code section 547, 857 B1 and 4. And I do not...
All right, so I guess what we will have at this time is someone will make a...
Make a motion to recess?
We don't have...
We do not have any speaker cards, no.
Not for the subcommittee.
All right, I'm making a motion.
If someone needs a second.
No, second.
Motion by council member Duncan, second by Mayor Protim Enmeyer, and I will go ahead and start the voting.
And the motion is to go to closing.
To recess to close session, exactly.
All right, is that your second also?
Yes, I seconded it, and now we need to vote.
Yes, now you vote.
Yeah.
I already, yes, seconded, yes.
I think what we're gonna have to do though is when you make a motion, you're gonna have to state the motion. That way you know, we know what we're saying.
Good call.
All right.
And the motion carries 5:02 recess to close session at 5:31 PM. Thank you.
Testing, testing. We are ready to call the meeting to order. And invocation will be given by Reverend Dale Rosenberg, San Clemente Presbyterian Church.
Your power is often revealed through our actions. You identify needs that only human hearts and hands can satisfy. As we must consider tough policy decisions and deal with minutia of balance sheets, we dare not allow the longings of human hearts to become invisible to us. Ever looking to the common good, we pray the struggles and joys of individuals and families remain real to our deliberations. Help us not to replicate divisions of us versus them within our work and plans. The invidious chasms troubling our society that we exist to remove rather than reinforce. We lift this commitment wherever we are in the crossroads of life, whether liberal or conservative, comfortably nested or homeless. And so it is we ask your blessing upon our chosen San Clemente City Council leaders. Chase and assault to receptivity, kindness, and full respect, especially toward those unlike ourselves. Deny his complacency and give us awareness that all leaders are servant leaders of the living God. I pray in the name of Jesus Christ with heart open to the faith and practice of every person here present tonight. Amen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a quick announcement. First, we'll note for the record that all five council members are present for the regular meeting of April 16th, 2024. And with that, I'd like to announce that we are starting tonight with utilizing a new electronic voting system. So you'll see agenda items appear on the screens in front of you as well as the votes that council members make. With that, you may see a little bit of a delay as we move through items because it takes just a couple of seconds for us to move from one item to the next. Also, along those same lines, in an effort to move the meeting more efficiently, we've reserved five seats up here at the front. When I call your name, take a place at those seats. And then when it's your turn, you'll come to the podium to speak for your three minutes. Also, once the meeting commences, if you could hand Deputy City Clerk Jimenez your speaker cards, that would help us again continue with the flow of the meeting. And then one item, just housekeeping item, item 9D is in David, is being pulled from the agenda. And I believe, was there a request to move council member items to the top of the agenda as well?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Without objection?
So all in favor of moving council member items to the top of the agenda? So we can go ahead and proceed with that now.
Okay, well, I would only add one other thing, and that is, you don't see it, but we all have new screens and new iPads here. And this screen is different than this screen, and we have to look back and forth and decide how we vote. And this is a new process for each of us that we're getting trained on as we work tonight. So if you see some delay in us voting or pushing a button to vote, and it's not the appropriate time, we're working through this system too.
So, Mr. Mayor, should we vote on that last item with the system? Just to create the record of it, Laura?
We will do a roll call vote for that item, just because it's not...
Okay.
For things that aren't on the agenda, we can't add in a vote.
I see, okay.
So, roll call vote, we'll start with Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Lefler?
Aye.
Councilmember Noblock? Councilmember, Mayor Protemin Meyer?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabral.
Aye.
And that carries five oh to move council member items, item 13, to the top of the agenda.
And I'd just like to ask the mayor if he can have your indulgence at the end of the meeting, hopefully not too many hours from now. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of J.J. Martin, who was tragically passed a couple of weeks ago. If nobody has any objection.
Absolutely no objection. Without objection, seeing no objection, we will do that.
In a situation like that, it just passes by acclamation, right?
Correct, yes. No need for a vote.
That's correct. Rick, did you want to begin with your presentation?
Yeah, I'll tell you, this is a little embarrassing because before, we always used to do the council comments at the end of the meeting when there were a few people less. So, again, indulge me. I just wanted to say something. I'm sharing with you a kind of a monumental anniversary today. Exactly 50 years ago today, April 16, 1974, I was sworn into the Los Angeles Police Department. And, yeah, that's me on the left, yeah.
Who was that young man?
So, I'll tell you, the person that swore me in there was Edward M. D... So I'll tell you, the person that swore me in there was Edward M. Davis, was the police chief, and this is just for context, I'll tell a little story about him. You can Google this, this is all right true. In the 70s, we were having a lot of, all of a sudden hijackings were coming up. That's in the 70s when it became a thing. And so they called a press conference, and they asked Chief Davis at that time, well, what are you going to do to deter hijackings in Los Angeles? And he came back very glib and said easily, we're just going to hang them at the airport. Now, that's not a comment I'm making, I'm just saying it's a different time now, it's really, really interesting how things have changed. Want to go to the next slide? Now, that's what a police officer should look like, right there. I'll tell you, still the best police uniform ever is the LAPD blue uniform. No patches, no stuff, just all I've got is that six-gun there, which is also, things have changed quite a bit. But that's the, right here is the era of Adam 12. If anybody ever watched that show, this was Adam 12. And lastly, on the last, that's right before the Olympics, and the chief there on the left is Darrell Gates. And Darrell Gates is inspecting us there, we had a special unit, we were getting ready to go out and work before the Olympics. And Darrell Gates was a mainstay in San Clemente. All the old timers will know, they'll talk about seeing Darrell, he had a condo here, spent a lot of time here, 70s, 80s, and 90s. And some of the old timers will tell you that every now and then you'd be having coffee someplace, they'd go in and start talking, and as, I never knew this, as a chief, I never knew this, but once Darrell started talking to you about public safety and San Clemente and how beautiful it was, you couldn't shut him up. And the one thing he always said is that public safety, being a public servant will be the greatest thing that you ever do, it'll be the most rewarding, and I have to say that's 100% true, I always found that. And I consider, to any of the public servants in the audience, public safety, or teachers, or whoever, including my fellow council people up here, or public servants, and it's always, it was always a pleasure and an honor to serve with the people that I served with on LAPD, and it's a pleasure and honor to serve with my fellow council people, staff, and anybody in the audience. So thank you very much, I appreciate your indulgence. Oh, well, you know, it was either do this or go with my buddies to a bar and have drinks. So I chose this, just so you know. There's time.
My colleagues know, I'm going to give my report, and then I don't know if any of you have anything after that. I wanted to report on a couple of things. That is, we're still working through with Army Corps of Engineers and Manson on what our contribution will be ultimately to the sand replenishment project. Still working on a firm date, we're hoping it's this month. But there has been several people that have helped us enormously on this effort, and I just wanted to call them out on behalf of the city. One is Mike Levin, the second is our Senator Alex Padilla, and the third is our Senator Butler, who wrote an ice letter on behalf of the city of San Clemente outlining the need for the money and the fact that we don't have any additional money to contribute, and so that we expect and hope that the Army Corps of Engineers will figure out a way to get that money. The second is Lori Davies, who, along with Janet Nguyen, organized and produced a letter of one, two, three, four, five, six, 10 different state senators on the city of San Clemente's behalf. It's a bipartisan letter, and it also asks the Army Corps of Engineers to work on helping us with the funding of this project, and we know there's going to be an increase, we hope it's not as much as they originally told us it was going to be, but I think we need to point out that we have a lot of champions in the state and federal. I also wrote a letter on behalf of the city of San Clemente to the same Mike Connor and Lieutenant General, explaining our situation. The second thing is, I wanted to thank also, well, this is another letter that we sent out this week that was requested by Congressman Levin, asking the city to support the funding efforts for emergency funding of the Basileone Road at Camp Pendleton. They're trying to repair all that, they had an opportunity to get some money. They called us up last Thursday at 4:30 and said, we need a letter today on behalf of the city so that we can support money getting those roads repaired, and so the city of San Clemente also did that. Also, I know there's been a lot of conversation about our relationship with the Coastal Commission and the OCTA. Over this past few weeks, we've, the city manager and I have gone out and taken them on tours, along with the Marine Mineral Program of the federal government, taking them on tours everywhere from Mariposa Beach all the way down the coastline. They've come from all over the country to take a look at the damage that's been done to our city. These are the people that ultimately will decide whether we get more sand, where that sand comes from, and we made our case to them about how we need sand replenishment and sand retention here in San Clemente, and they are absolutely great partners in this effort. Finally, we were able, based on some meetings that we had with the OCTA, and Andy did an excellent effort convincing them that they needed to send a letter to Colonel Baker, trying to see if the Army Corps of Engineer could spend the remediation money to put sand, their remediation money for OCTA, on our beaches. So we're making effort on all those fronts. It's all about sand replenishment, and I think we're doing, the city is doing the right thing, along with all of us here who are working on it. It's not just me, it's us and all our federal and state partners, and we are making progress on sand replenishment, and we will continue to work as a city council for these efforts. I think the city council has made it clear that that's our top priority, and we will continue to work in that effort. Thank you.
Yeah, just mention, I was proud to go with other residents to the listening sessions of OCTA, speak out on behalf of the city of San Clemente as a resident, and let them know that we need more sand, less rocks. That was the message that I was delivering along with so many other residents, right? And so to the extent that you don't know about those meetings, please get some information about them, some of the folks in here, I think, participated as well. I think there's going to be an in-person one coming up, right here in council chambers, if I'm correct. So the more people that participate, the louder the message, and we can do this in a respectful way and still partner with OCTA, but we want to send the message that we believe our beaches are more important than a rail line, and so we need to make sure that that sand comes our way and that they don't destroy our beach in the process of protecting that rail line. We also spoke at the Coastal Commission, a lot of residents did, and I was proud to speak as well. So that's going on. I'll mention one other thing. I was at the town hall yesterday participating with Sheriff Barnes on fentanyl. If you don't know, fentanyl is now a leading cause of death for our youth, along with car accidents. It's exponentially on the rise. We can't do much about the border and, you know, these drugs coming in, but I can tell you that the partnership between our sheriff's department and the U.S. Border Patrol, where I used to work, is incredible. We have some of the largest fentanyl busts in the state of California, right here in San Clemente, if you don't know that. That's because of that close working relationship. So I don't think Jay and our sheriff's folks are here, but to let you know that that work is being done on the front line on behalf of our kids, but it takes parents, that was the message at this town hall, being aware of what your kids are doing. It's like Sheriff Barnes said, "Parents are subject to the Fourth Amendment." Right? Me, us, we don't need a search and seizure warrant to go look through our kids' stuff to make sure that they're not falling down that path. So that was a really powerful message. I was, you know, fortunate to be able to participate as a parent as well, and on behalf of the city there, standing with law enforcement and Hoke Hospital, frankly, to get that message out. So we'll keep working on that front, too. Thank you.
Yeah, I forgot one thing that I know my colleagues joined me in this, is that we had an event at Semper Fi Park for the Battle of Ramadi, 20-year anniversary, and if any of you get a chance to see the video of that, it was a moving presentation by several of the mothers that had lost their children at that battle 20 years ago, and some Marines. And the 2-4, which is our adopted unit here in San Clemente, were in full presence. I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that, or I know you were, it was a moving...
I'll just echo that, that is a very moving experience. If you have a chance to go visit Park Semper Fi, if you have a chance to go visit Park Semper Fi, there's a beautiful plaque there, and it commemorates all of the soldiers who died on that fateful day. So there are two mothers who spoke, and it was, who lost their sons, made the ultimate sacrifice, so it was very moving to listen to, and very much proud to be part of the town that supports our Marines so hardwely.
I was unable to attend to anything, I was out of state, but my son fought in the Battle of Ramadi 20 years ago, lost a number of his friends there, as well as the Battle for Luzia, and it was very disappointing that I couldn't attend that meeting, but I'm glad it was...
You'll have to go see that plaque, and it's an amazing, it was an amazing event. I don't think there was a dry eye in the whole event, I think, listening to those mothers, but we'll have to always remember our Marines here at the city. All right, well, let's move on to our...
Next item on the agenda, moving back up to special presentations, fiscal year 23-24 second quarter and mid-year budget adjustments. This is a presentation from Financial Services Officer Ron concerning the fiscal year 23-24 second quarter report and mid-year budget adjustments.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jake Ron, and I'm from the Finance Department, and I'm going to be covering the mid-year financial report, which is through the second quarter as ended December 31st, 2023. Going on the next slide, the second quarter report and mid-year overview, I'll be covering the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the city, covering the revenues and the expenditures, and going through some mid-year adjustments, and a comprehensive list is attached in the agenda report. The next slide shows that the general fund revenues in comparison to the last year, you can see it's 38% to 43%, it is slightly up from a dollar amount. In total, the percentage goes down because of the larger base for the fiscal year 2023-24, and that increase is primarily related to the cost Romantica land stabilization and the reserve transfer over, which is recorded as a revenue in the general fund. So that will be done at the completion of the project or near the end of the fiscal year. The next slide covers property taxes. Property taxes is one of the main revenues in the general fund, and you can see there is a year-over-year increase. We are anticipating on hitting the budget, and there is actually a mid-year adjustment in the mid-year listing for an increase of about $250,000. The next slide goes through sales tax, which is the second-largest revenue source for the general fund. You can see from a dollar perspective, there is an increase at mid-year. In total, last year, we received about $12.6 million. This year, we still are anticipating getting about $13.1 million, so there is going to be a year-over-year dollar increase. However, last year's sales tax was a little bit soft, and the budget adjustment in the mid-year listing recognizes that and adjusts it down at mid-year for about $250,000 also. The next slide covers general fund expenditures. Again, budget to actual, you can see year-over-year, the actual costs are an increase from the previous year, and much like the revenues, the percentage is down, and similar to the revenues, the expenditures recognize the Casa Romantica land stabilization costs that are being paid over the course of the year. That project is about $8 to $9 million, so you can see it went up about $10 million from the previous year's budget, so. The next slide goes through the general fund revenue mid-year adjustments. Again, I kind of, oh, wait, sorry, I got ahead of myself. The next slide, again, for the general fund, it's a neutral operating position, the revenue mid-year adjustments, the increase in the property taxes, again, the 225, sales taxes decrease about $250,000, and there are some other minor adjustments. The total general fund revenue budget changes are $147,700. The next slide goes through the general fund expenditure mid-year adjustments. Again, not anything significant, the total general fund expenditure changes, we're recommending budget adjustments of $141,350, again, relatively neutral to the revenue changes. The next slide goes through all the other fund adjustments. Other fund revenues increased by $280,200, again, primarily related to transfers in for street sweeping support and transit support, and that's just transferring between funds and fund balances. Other revenue, again, a net amount of $3,400. The other fund expenditures increased by about $1.9 million, and that's primarily related to water costs, which is in the water fund. General liability costs, transfers, again, that's kind of the other side of the revenue changes, and sewer costs primarily related to chemical supplies and a net cost of $283 for other expenditures. Most of those adjustments would be coming from fund balance to fund those costs. So with that, the recommended actions are to receive and file the fiscal year 2023-24 second quarter report, and approve and authorize the mid-year adjustments for fiscal year 2023-24 as listed in Attachment B, and I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Well, I'm glad it was thorough, comprehensive report, we've all gone through it with staff already, and there was no surprises, which is always good. Is there any questions? All right, do we have any?
No speaker cards.
No speaker cards, all right, well, this...
Sometimes it's helpful to understand a little bit about the property tax and the sales tax. The property tax in the city, of the property tax residents pay, the city receives about 16% of that, and the other goes to school districts and other entities. Of the sales tax, the sales tax, of course, is 7.5%, the city gets 1%, and the other 6.5% goes to other entities, including the state, county, and other places. So sometimes residents may not understand that, so sometimes it's good to just kind of add just a little bit of information on those things.
All right, thank you. Someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, we'll move to file, receive and file the staff report.
And? And...
And mid-year budget...
Authorize a mid-year budget adjustment, as stated, yeah.
We have a motion by Mayor Protim and Meyer, second by Councilmember Duncan, and you can go ahead and start your voting. And the motion carries 5-0 to follow the staff recommendation.
So next on the agenda, Employee Service Award.
Yes, and this is a presentation by City Manager Hall recognizing the 2024 Core Values Award recipients, Brant Vera, Kay Boiserank, Dave Laughlin, Marilyn Maris, and Scott Pierce, recognizing Thomas Evans for 35 years of service to the city, and Scott Pierce as the 2024 Employee of the Year, and we have Scott Pierce here in the audience.
All right. So...
So Mayor, I think we have a video we just want to show real quick, and it is a really nice video that shows a little bit of our service awards that were given out. The mayor and I had a chance to do this, oh, it's been about a month ago, and so we just wanted to share that with the public for, real quick. Hopefully, we've got a new system, so I'm going to sit in here nervous, but, oh, there we go. Maybe. Oh, the music's not playing. There's really cool music, if anybody wants to sing, they could do that.
I nominate Rick.
Probably the year should be singing right now.
You're in a band.
So while they're looking at this, I guess I can speak a little bit. These people are the kind of people we need that stay with the city. One of the difficulties of running a city is losing employees after a short amount of time training them, and so the people that stay here and spend 35 years are truly appreciated for the experience that they bring to this city and their dedication to this city, and we do appreciate them all. And we do appreciate, appreciate them all. So we had an award ceremony and these awards, they were all recognized, gave speeches. The city staff, all the city staff was there. And a very, very beautiful event for them. And we're going to do a little presentation here.
Quick, so our Employee of the Year, normally we call the Employee of the Year up to tell a little bit about themselves and what they did, but we're going to throw them a curveball. The Employee of the Year, his mom worked for the city for a long time and she's here tonight. So we wanted to recognize a former employee who was with the city for a long time as well. So we appreciate, and she obviously raised a great employee. We're going to have Scott come up. It was really funny, he wasn't able to make it. He made the Employee of the Year and we have this big ceremony and he didn't even show up. He was out working while he got the Employee of the Year. But no, we really appreciate him and want to give you a few minutes to just share some of your most exciting times that you've had here in the city of San Clemente.
Well, first of all, Andy, Mary Cabral, and the rest of the council and everybody here, thank you so much. You know, it really is an honor to, to serve the city. Like Andy was saying, my mom, she worked here for 20 years. So I grew up going to the City Yard and visiting my mom and work. And, you know, here I am and I'm a city employee as well at the City Yard. So it's kind of a neat, neat thing to be a part of that. Yeah, I wasn't at the, the service awards. There's a reason for that, though. I was actually at a two-day training that I previously signed up for. And it was the last day of the training, I had to take a final test and that was when the service awards were going on. So while I was taking the test, the service awards were going on. So I was getting all these text messages on both my work, my personal phone. And it was everything I could do not to, to pull those out to make the instructor think that I was cheating. And, you know, it wasn't until after the test that I found out that I was Employee of the Year. And I was just blown away by, you know, my friends and coworkers and what they had to say. So it was just such a blessing. And I did pass the test, by the way. So, yeah, that's a bonus. Yeah, it's an honor to work here. I work for the Maintenance Division. We have a great group of guys and gals down there. And I'm a facilities guy, that's my title. So the guys that I work with, we're like the trades guys for the city. And we are inside and outside and on top of every building here. So we get to interact with all the staff on a day-to-day basis. And I can tell you from, you know, just a firsthand experience that we have a truly amazing staff here at the city. And I'm just blessed to be a part of it and I'm just a small part of it, so thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, this award was actually voted on by his peers, by the other city employees. And that's what makes it so special, that it's your, your own peers that chose you.
I so appreciate it, yeah, it truly is an honor, so thank you.
I don't know if your colleagues gave you the plaque we gave you.
They did.
Well, can we get in the center here and we'll take a picture?
I didn't bring it with me, though.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that you keep it.
Yeah, these are my kids, come up. And my wife and our youngest back there, too.
Oh, everybody's come up.
I tried to recruit them.
I know, I know.
It runs in the family, you guys can be here soon.
We have applications for.
We're just going to keep it going.
All right, ready? One, two, three, I'll do it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there a comment, comments?
There are no comments. Moving on, when we're ready next, next item.
Go ahead.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Oral Communications. And we do have several speakers, so again, I'll call the first five speakers if you can take a place at these reserved seats. Amanda Q., followed by Gary Hedrick, followed by Riva Wright Buck, followed by Habib Hosseini, followed by Susie Lance. And so Amanda Q., come on up. You're the first speaker.
You have to sit down first.
Don't sit down first, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, I should have moved that back.
Yeah, I don't want to break it when the.
Oh, okay, okay, there we go. Okay, next slide, please. It was really alarming to see the O.C. Register article that mentioned a half-mile wall for 200 million. And I reached out to the City Manager and OCT representatives. Next slide, please. And the conversation that I have with OCT representative, he explained where the rough order of magnitude, 200 million estimates came from. He provided the March 11th, 2024 Board of Director, Board Agenda Packet and pointed out that it's on page 985 of 988, which showed the information along with the high-level breakdown of the components of the planning level. It's also on page 18 of 21 from the March 4th OCTA Presentation Agenda Item 6. Next slide, please. So at a recent OCTA meeting, Mr. Daryl Johnson, OCTA CEO, in his report stated the following. "We will continue to try to convey to the fact that the staff has never made a $200 million recommendation to the board. The board has never been asked to vote on a $200 million recommendation. We are continuing to look at options that we can consider with all the stakeholders and the regulatory agencies. We have put that out multiple times and want to be very clear. You all know, we have not asked for you to, we have not made a recommendation. We have not asked you to make that type of investment in any way, shape, or form." And that was to the Board of Directors that he spoke to. Next slide, please. This was an email, according to the City Manager. He said that additionally, OCTA has recently demonstrated the need for sand to accompany any armory of the coast which aligns with the city's interests near the revampment. Next slide, please. But it is also mentioned in the OCTA's Coastal Resiliency Study and the Initial Assessment Technical Memorandum, page four, where it says basically, was this initial assessment limited to immediate actions to be performed by the railroad, the short and medium, medium-term solutions being explored? It will not be limited to that narrow scope and will consider other regional solutions such as sand replenishment. And that is something, well, is highlighted because they, that's in the report. Next slide, please. Following the OCTA Listening Session, the City Manager stated that he did want to add that while it is true that sand requires ongoing maintenance, so does the revampment, just like any infrastructure such as roads, sidewalks, utility lines, parks, and et cetera. And the, our mayor already stated that OCTA has indicated they will play sand, oh, no, never mind. OCTA has indicated that they will play sand if we can get the permits in place. In fact, they have written to the Army Corps of Engineers asking to play sand as an extension for our current project. While that may not be allowed, their willingness means a lot. And next slide, please. So someone had mentioned in the Listening Session regarding the pledge for climate and the time is up. It's weird because I'm used.
You're used to these, and now you have to look at the clock at the bottom.
It's bizarre. So it's like, wait a minute, where am I looking at? Thank you so much.
Thank you, we did get a copy of this, this presentation, so.
Oh, great, thank you.
We did look at it also, thank you, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Gary Hedrick, followed by Riva Wright Buck, followed by Habib Hosseini, followed by Susie Lance. Gary Hedrick is at the podium, okay?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I appreciate being here again. I just wanted to take a moment to share with you. San Clemente Green is sponsoring the Santa Fe Syndrome movie for a week. It started yesterday and it's free for viewing on Eventive. And I thought this would be a good opportunity to let the community know and how appreciative I am. The Tri-Cities local papers did a great page and a half article on this, too. So I'm grateful for the support from the community and I'll just highlight what's on this flyer so you can get one at the back also, if you like. Santa Fe Syndrome, Nuclear Power's Legacy, multiple award-winning documentary about our own communities. Go to sanofresyndrome.com for the free streaming. It's one week only until April 22nd on Earth Day. There are 3.6 million pounds of highly radioactive waste lasting millions of years. It's abandoned behind this wall in thin corroding temporary cancers. We must take action before it's too late. Filmed over 12 years, SOS spotlights the essential role citizens must play to ensure public safety is the top priority. With deadly radioactive waste left near a popular beach, a nationwide crisis emerges and the race to avert catastrophe becomes a stark countdown against time. Will our community rally to implement this lifeline in time? And that's the big question. So I won't take any more of your time unless you want to, like, say great things about the movie. But thank you very much and I hope you all enjoy it.
Thank you, you haven't seen it, but you left a flyer at the back, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Next speaker is Riva Wright Buck, followed by Habib Hosseini. Riva?
Thank you. The homeowners on Cay Felicidad are seeking support from the city to enforce the city's conditions of approval for Broadmoor. These conditions were imposed and agreed upon in 1976 by the City Council, the City Planning Commission, the Broadmoor developer, and the homeowners of Presidio and Felicidad, which then allowed Broadmoor to continue and complete its development on to Cay Delacada. We're requesting a meeting with Mayor Cabral, Adam Atomian, the City, the Community Development Director, Rick Lefler, City Councilmember, and Andy Hall, the City Manager, to provide them with documentation and details. Thank you.
Thank you. On that issue, the, the City Manager, you could reach out to him or make arrangements?
Okay, thank you. Habib Hosseini?
Yes, thank you for letting us bring you some mission. You know, my three granddaughters went through the school system in San Clemente. I want to talk about teacher appreciation. The first week of May is National Teacher Appreciation Week. We at the Bahi Center have arranged a luncheon to appreciate teachers. I have some invitation cards, I'll give it to all of you. If you have teachers you want to appreciate, RSVP and come. The teachers are really the spirit of the city. And I really admire the city and the school system to be so well-prepared. Teachers are so hardworking and they really deserve a lot of appreciation. That's it, do you have any questions?
Thank you, thank you very much.
And one more thing, maybe next year, for this purpose, if City Council or the city could cooperate with the Bahais of San Clemente, we can add to the scope of it. Because right now, we only go to three schools, the high school and two elementary schools. We were not able to go to the other schools because we could not really afford all of the schools. So this could be a project for the city of San Clemente. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. None of us would be up here without the teachers that, that we have. Did you want to leave something here?
I'll call the next several speakers, Susie Lance, followed by Susie Whitelaw, followed by Dennis Grimes, followed by Mike K. Susie Lance?
Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is Susie Lance, I'm, I am representing your friendly neighborhood Chamber of Commerce tonight. And I wanted to just give a little update on what's happening. A lot of folks ask us, when are the chamber meetings? So our regular meetings take place on the final Wednesdays of most months. And we will have a meeting next week. As always, this will take place at the outlets of San Clemente, at the VIP Lounge at noon. And because we have a lot of eaters in the chamber, we provide lunch for the members. And now with so many folks coming, we're asking guests to contribute $20 for the lunch. Next week, we will be hosting Congressman Levin to provide a legislative update, so we invite all of you to attend. Secondly, the, on Friday, May 3rd, we're hosting alongside the city, the State of the City Luncheon that will take place at Belcalina. And this year, we thought it would be fun to have a, kind of a color theme to represent our Spanish village by the sea, so we're inviting folks to wear blue or a little bit of blue if they would like to. And we currently have a waitlist for this, so if you'd like to come, please let us know right away. We have all the council and city, I think, RSVPs. Finally, on Saturday, May 11th, we're hosting alongside our partner, Left Coast Brewing Company, the South Orange County Micro Brew and Salzer Fest, which should be great. It will be back in the Tolega Business Park. From 1:00 to 4:00, VIPs come at 12:00, so we invite all of you to participate in that. Many more things to come, but for now, that's it. Thank you for supporting us.
Yes, thank you to the chamber for all you do in this community.
Susie Whitelaw, followed by Dennis Grimes, followed by Mike K. Susie?
Hi, I have a presentation. Susie Whitelaw with Save Our Beaches San Clemente. As you may or may not be aware, OCTA is proposing a 50-foot-wide engineered revampment across the entire San Clemente State Beach, starting from north of Calafia State Park, this beach park, all the way down to Cypress Shores. Next slide, please. These red lines here indicate 50 feet from the tracks. So that revamp would take up 100% of all the dry sand that we have left on that beach. Next slide, please. They're doing a similar rock dump, but unengineered at North Beach. It appears that it's going to start just south at the swing set and go down between those red lines. Next slide. And then at DJ Melportal, they're going to add four-ton boulders. That's as big, you know, they say four foot by four foot by four foot on top of those existing boulders, and I just don't see how they're really going to do that. Next slide, please. So they're proposing to do that and then what they are committed to, as everybody has said, they are committed to doing this and then they are going to think about sand replenishment. They're adamant that they are not going to do the sand replenishment. They will do it just like they did at Cypress Shores. They wrecked the beach, they threw down all the rocks that they wanted, and then they are going to pay in lieu fees. What good does money do when our beach is gone, 100% gone? If it looks like it does on the left, we all seen the, how they set up the dredging operation. How do you set up that dredge operation when there's no beach at all? When it's just waves crashing up against rocks? And our, our City Council members have so wisely, and I thank them very much, that they have tagged on to the Sandag Regional Sand Beach Replenishment Project in 2027. But one of the main points was to get this beach replenished and North Beach, and it'll be gone and it'll be worthless. Next slide, please. If you look at it from a cross-section, my graphics department spent a lot of time on this, but on the left would be like it is now. There is some space on the dry sand beach, but once rocks are all over that and you just have that more steeply sloping place, how are you going to restore that? How do you do that? How much money do you throw at a problem that can't be solved? Next slide, please. So Save Our Beaches is coming up with a plan. We have a plan to bring in sand from Prado Dam by train. The railroad says, oh, you can't use the railroad tracks to offload the sand. We came up with another plan. We're going to truck it, take it down to the Santa Fe Siding, offload it there, put it on trucks, truck it on through Calafia and onto the state beach. No impact to OCTA. They can then install the limited amount of revamp possible. We know they don't need a 50-foot seawall on that. What they need is what has protected those beaches for the last 120 years, wider beaches. And thank you.
Next speaker is Dennis Grimes, followed by Mike K., followed by Dave Stowe, followed by John Tilton.
So Laura, I'm going to go ahead and pass my time, we're crowded, and I've already heard what I wanted to say.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Mike K.
Councilmembers, I'm a little surprised not to see agendized the proposal to make San Clemente a riprap-free zone. I know I'm kind of using some careful language there, but I'm hoping it is agendized. I hope we do. I hope we do stick with that. I saw some real bravado, some guts from you guys. And I hope to see you guys follow through, do what the people want. Kudos to you. Let's see it soon. I want to talk about something else. Sand, 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 right? So I've seen the word "sea level rise" get thrown around. Sea level rise. None of us can tell what the sea level rise is in our town, as far as I can tell. I've been on the NASA side, snow. I've looked at the SWAT satellite that's checking out water levels. I would encourage you guys to become sea level rise experts, just as you are with grain size and transportation systems and everything else related to sand, which all of us here in town are suddenly becoming experts at. Check out sea level rise. It is the justification that's used for a revetment expansion. State of California has said that there will be 30 inches of sea level rise by 2015. They just changed it. It went down to nine inches. And it's going to go down further. There is no sea level rise here in the Pacific Ocean in front of our community. None that's been recorded in 140 years by the US Army Corps of Engineers. Our land subsides two inches every 100 years. Play tectonics. In Alaska, it goes up. Louisiana, it sunk 12 inches. East Coast, the US, more than that, they have problems. Our land is predictable. In the next 100 years, our land will go down another two inches or so. So we don't need giant revetments. We're not getting a bunch of water coming in. There's a little bit of temperature increase, 1.7 degrees. Last 100 years, the water in the ocean's got a little hotter. It has expanded a little bit. That's true. This idea that the sea level is going up because the rivers are dumping a bunch of water from the glaciers and everything. And I've been to the top of Kilimanjaro. I've seen a glacier that was no longer there. That's a real thing. But the idea that a lot of water is going to the ocean, we have sea level rise, and we need a giant revetment is a bunch of bullhonky. We should not listen to that. And when the OCTA or anyone else uses that to justify it, please do a little research on yourself and understand that that is a false narrative. And we should not be suckered into that idea that we need a giant wall for sea level rise. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Final speaker is John Tilton.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for some time this evening. Truly appreciate the sacrifices you make, whether or not you're for an agenda or not. You guys are sacrificing your time, your hobbies, everything else. Everybody in the community really appreciates you. I do want to bring something to your attention, but, and I wish Samantha Wiley was here. Every time pickleball is on the agenda, we're packed. There's tons of people here. I have a local garage door company. I go into people's garages all the time. I meet with them. I see pickleball stuff in everybody's garage now. It's taking over as the most popular sport. She doesn't recognize that. And I would hope tonight she would be here just to see everybody here, just to get her to recognize, hey...
We do... We have pickleball in the agenda following...
No, no, no. I know. This is more just for...
Okay.
She's actually really kind of become anti-pickleball. And we've repeatedly said, hey, we want to come up with a committee. We want to sit with you. We want to come up with ideas. If she doesn't recognize tonight that there are this many people here, maybe we need to consider replacement for her. I wish... I just, I think, we just need to have somebody that recognizes the importance of this. But thank you for your time. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was it for oral communications. Next is motion waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
Someone want to make that motion?
I'll move that we waive a reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
That was motion by Councilmember, no box, second by Mayor Protem Enmeyer.
Okay, let's vote on it then.
Go ahead and start the voting. We've got all five votes. Item carries 502.
All right.
Waive reading in full. Next item on the agenda is consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action.
Any motions for immediate action tonight? Hearing none. We'll move on to the...
Moving on, closed session. Report, City Attorney.
City Attorney, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session on the only item on the closed session agenda. There was direction given, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff Communications?
Any staff communications?
I don't believe that there are any.
And then denied, Andy?
You know, Mayor, the only thing I would say is that people are likely to see some mobilization of the construction activity for the restart of the sand being placed on the beach. That's likely to happen, maybe late this week, early next week. We will probably start to see sand towards the end of the month, probably the last week of April. That will continue for about 60 days. We're trying to still work with them to see if there's a possibility that they could work longer shifts, maybe even 24 hours, to see if we could compress that 60 days, maybe a little bit, so that we don't lose very many summer days on our beach. We want to see what we can do to try to get that project done as quickly as possible. But we'll keep everybody up to date as we learn more.
But as of today, we don't have a firm start date.
We do not have a firm start date of today.
On the payment yet. So we'll keep working on those two things.
City Manager, thank you for your efforts to get this thing done by the 4th of July.
All right.
Okay, next up is public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation and a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the City Council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the motion by manner. And, the matter by motion, rather. And the first item, the first public hearing this evening is public hearing on establishment of recreation fees for the use of pickleball courts and other pickleball-related actions and finding such action not subject to further environmental review. And we have Beaches, Parks, and Recreation Director Wiley here for her presentation. Would you like to go ahead and open the public hearing?
I'm going to open the public hearing and hear from Samantha Wiley and...
Mayor, if I might just make a real quick comment. You know, I just, I do have to respond. I have not, I have not seen that, that kind of attitude or that kind of concern with Samantha about pickleball. She worked tirelessly to make sure that the pickleball courts happened at Steed. I think she put in incredible effort to make sure that happened. I just want to make sure that people recognize that, you know, when I see her on a daily basis, she's very dedicated to everything recreation in this community, including pickleball. It's a delicate issue. We have been approached, even by pickleball players, to maybe put together some sort of fee structure so that there could be some reservations for people that can't wait around to play. They want to come and play at their lunch hour and leave. They need reservation systems. So this is a complex issue. I hope it's not a personal issue. I think that Samantha does a very good job trying very hard to make a lot of interests come together at the same point.
I would only add that, you know, maybe the City Council, we're responsible ultimately for the policymaking. She carries out our wishes, and we asked her to do something that maybe might have been impossible in that short period of time. But I do firmly believe, I mean, she did what we asked her to come up with a policy. It may not be the best policy. It may not be one that even works right now. But that's why we're having this hearing, to hear from the public and see where we're at, and then make a decision tonight about how we make our next steps. So let's hear from...
Just want to add on to that, that our staff and our City Manager works at the direction of the council. So whatever policy comes back, we, the council, ultimately decide on. It should not be taken personally on any staff member for our city. So it is, that sentiment should be removed. If there's issues, please come and talk to council. And we will work on that.
So let's move on to the staff report.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Councilman Samantha Wiley, Beaches, Parks, and Recreation Director. I do appreciate those comments. I do want to reiterate that I think that this is a really important part of our public process. So I'm really happy to be here this evening to get council's feedback, as we also hear more from the public and our stakeholders of the pickleball community. And I know that there are many of them. I do acknowledge that. And I think we're here because we know pickleball is growing. We know it's important in this town. So with that, I will start, I have a really brief presentation. I'll jump right in. Maybe not. There it goes. Okay. So I have some historical data. We've taken some information specific to visit durations at both San Gregorio Park and Richard T. Steed Memorial Park. And this is just in the timeframe when we opened up Steed Park and also had San Gregorio live as well. So you'll see that the visits here, this is the average visit duration. So in the staff report, and the recommendation goes to court reservations at 90 minutes. That number was derived from this figure right here. You can see that at Steed Park, the average usage is about 89 minutes. That's how long people stay and play. And at San Gregorio Park, it's about 68 minutes. So that's the reason for the 90-minute court reservation recommendation. Again, very flexible with that, and we're happy to talk through that further. This next slide provides some hourly visit data, again, at both San Gregorio Park and Richard T. Steed Park. San Gregorio is noted in what's kind of a reddish pink, and Steed is in that blue color as well. You'll see that the top slide and the top chart reflects hourly visits, kind of those peak usage times. And you can see that Steed Park gets highly used starting at 8:00 AM, and it's pretty consistent until it dips down at about 1:00 or 2:00, 1:30 in the afternoon. And then it kind of trickles back up. We see that towards the end of the day. Now, I think it's important to keep in mind, we're not seeing evening usage right now because we don't have lights out there. So I think we're not going to know for sure what light usage will produce. But I can say that based on experiences from our other facilities that do have lights, there's a huge demand for lighted facilities. It does expand the day. It expands the use of play. And that's the same case for our softball players, our soccer players, including our pickleball players. So I think there would be a use in the evening as well. Similarly, the daily visits, you can see, again, same colors. Steed Park is consistently used every single day, Friday being very popular. And it kind of dips down on Saturdays. And then San Gregorio, and this is what we would hope to see, is that usage is very much focused Monday through Friday. And we see significantly fewer players coming to San Gregorio. And I think, again, that was council's goal in opening up Steed Park, but then providing an alternate location at San Gregorio as well. The daily operations, I can't say that we know that there's usage on the weekends. That's against the rules. We know that. Staff know that. And park rangers do their best to respond. Unfortunately, there's some folks out there who have found ways to get into the courts when they're closed and locked. The daily operations for Steed Park, this goes into the staff recommendation and the park overview. So this is a recommendation to operate Steed Park Monday through Thursday, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Fridays, 6:00 AM to 6:30 PM. Saturdays and Sundays, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And those timeframes are really a derivative of the data that I just reviewed with you. Again, I'm very much open to suggestions if there's a need to expand or pare that down. I have found in operating the Aquatic Center and other similar facilities, the evenings on Saturdays and Sundays typically slow down. When we opened the Aquatic Center up, we went until 9:00 PM. That was not feasible. Nobody was coming between 8:00 and 9:00. I do think pickleball might have a later crowd, though, so I think that there's some importance in weekday later usage up until 9:00. Reservations and open play would both be recommended and available at Steed Park. So you could reserve a court, or you can drop in to play on an open court. When we say open play, that would be a drop-in, and we would seek to have a minimum of two courts available at all times for drop-in play. My sense from the pickleball community from many years is that drop-in play is important just as reservations are becoming more popular.
And then you'll have a chance afterwards to come up and speak.
You can go to page three of the staff report to see the recommendations for drop-in play. Monday through Friday, it's recommended that all eight courts at Steed Park be available from 7:30 AM to 12:00 PM for drop-in play. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 4:30 to 9:00 PM, four courts are recommended to be available for drop-in play. And the other four would be for reservation only. Saturdays and Sundays, the recommendation is to have six courts available for drop-in, 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and four courts available Saturdays and Sundays from 4:30 to 6:00 PM. The courts would close on Fridays at 6:00 PM, as that note. And I want to also point out that part of this staff recommendation is to also install lighting at Steed Park to, again, extend the play hours. Shifting focus to San Gregorio Park. Monday through Friday, this is council policy already. Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. This staff recommendation incorporates that. The goal here is to, again, taking council direction to focus in on lessons and beginning to intermediate play. The recommendation and the resolution by staff includes a requirement to use quiet paddles only at San Gregorio Park. The US APA has a growing list of approved quiet paddles that would be recommended. And then this site would be used by reservation only, and drop-in or open play would not be permitted. I also want to point out that we are working with our current contract instructor to expand pickleball lessons and access to include private lessons, semi-private lessons, larger group lessons, live play options. So we are working towards that as well under council's direction. Okay, as we get into fees, I want to note that, while I understand there are several public facilities that are free for use still, and there's private facilities as well that charge. There's public agencies that charge. These are the cities that were looked at for, these are public agency comparisons. Their list is there. City of Oceanside, Mission Viejo, Seal Beach, Fountain Valley, Garden Grove, Orange, Tustin. Now, some of these agencies do have nonprofits or booster clubs who manage their facilities, but they are city-owned facilities, and there is a fee to access the site. This is the fee schedule overview. This is in the staff report and in the resolution. When coming up with this fee structure, again, this is very flexible and intended to get feedback from the council and the public. What you see in front of you is very similar and akin to what we currently do at the Aquatic Center. We have a daily rate. We have a monthly pass for 30 days, a seasonal pass for 90 days, and an annual pass. And you'll see at the bottom, there's also the option for court reservations with an additional fee. These annual passes, they would cover the drop-in rate. So if you have an annual pass, you can go an unlimited amount of times with that annual pass. We have an adult rate, a youth rate, and a senior rate. I will note that the one difference and something to consider is, similar to other fee structures, we do typically merge our youth and senior rates. So if it's the appetite of the council, we could say, you could consider a senior at the same rate as the youth. And then I also want to note, and I know other facilities do this as well. They do have rates for couples. They have rates for families. Again, that's all feasible within our system. It's not something that staff considered as a part of this, but I'm happy to look into that further and provide a recommendation. And then, so this kind of concludes my report. Just to cover where we're at, there's a couple of options this evening. There's a resolution in there that captures what I've just spoken and shared with the council. You can consider and adopt that resolution, You can consider and adopt that resolution, and the fees in there are included, and that's an attachment one. You can modify this proposed fee schedule, or you can direct staff to go back out, get more information, give us some more detail based on what you're feeling is the right direction, and we can come back to the council, and I'm happy to do that. I want to note in the resolution related to hours of operations, we did write in some flexibility for the city manager to be able to increase hours or decrease hours based on usage. Again, learning from our current operations, there's an ebb and a flow in usage, and when you open a facility, you want to take down all those barriers to entry, you want to do it as big as possible to really cast a big net and see who you can bring in. But it's likely that as we go through, that we might see a shift in usage in times that are needed. So the resolution does give some authority to the city manager to dictate that for Steed Park. Thank you.
I guess that concludes your report. I would only add that, you know, you were put in a very difficult position to come up with a proposal, it's not easy. We, as a city council, I think we voted unanimously to ask you to take and look, come up with some proposals to review. We're at the process right now of just reviewing. And the most important part of this, and I think we will consider this, is listening to the public about their views. And I know I've heard a lot of comments, I think all of us have, about how this doesn't work, what works, what doesn't, but this is just a preliminary idea, and I think we'll work through it, hopefully we'll work through it, and see if it's a go or no go. So we will move on then to the public comments, so we can hear concerns, praise, objections on this issue, and we have public comments, I'm sure.
Mayor, we have about 21 public comments, so what I will do is call the first several speakers up, if you can line up in these seats here up front, reserved, and then the first speaker can come to the podium. So that's Patricia Wines, followed by Marty Weinberg, followed by Clark Fielding, followed by Chelsea Allen, followed by Elaine Cook. Patricia Wines?
So I would also ask, I mean, you have three minutes each, but if you've heard somebody making a point, and they've made it eloquently, you know, just consider that also, and make your newer, different point on this, or feel, if you feel that, you can say, you can use your three minutes however you want, but let's begin.
Okay, well, I'm Patricia Wines, I think I'm not going to be representing the majority of the people here. I came because...
Please speak into the microphones. And can you restart her time? But also to make the note to the crowd out there, please have a little respect for the staff and for the other speakers, if nothing else, so that everyone can hear what they're saying, right? That's what we're here, everybody deserves to have their voice heard, so please refrain from making those comments so that everyone can hear what the speakers say and what staff says and what council says. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patricia Wines, that sounds better. I'm here because I live in, next to San Gorgonio. When the courts were locked and closed, I returned to why I bought the property, it was quiet, it was wonderful. I am not happy that pickleball is going on there. I don't want it there at all, in that location, on those tennis courts. I was pleased that the city built very quickly, I thought, a temporary, or whatever it is, facility up at Steed. I understand that there's a large proposal here to do a magnificent pickleball facility. I guess as a taxpayer, I appreciate the need to have a place for people to play pickleball. I also know that we are bringing in people from other cities, and we are helping them, which is why I am very much in support of the fee structure, because I actually participate in Dana Point and some other communities, and there is a need to have pickleball, but there's not a lot of space. We happen to have space, which is terrific, but I don't think that San Clemente should bear the burden for all the surrounding cities. There is a fight in San Juan, there's a fight in Laguna Beach, there's a fight in Dana Point. So every city is doing this, I appreciate your problem. I'd like to see San Gorgonio go back to tennis exclusively, but the lessons that are being held there, at least in this interim part, is fine. I like the idea of using the quiet pickleball paddles, I don't know if they work, I've never seen them, I did research on them, so that would be helpful. The play being limited there is helpful, the restricted hours are helpful, but I also think that building a nice facility for pickleball and charging fees is completely reasonable. And thank you for making a stab at it, doing a start, and I think it would be helpful for all these people that come if they had a sign-in, so you could let them know, I don't know if you guys do that, of how many people came, and just kind of where they were on the issue. Because, I mean, if they're not wearing their red shirts, we can't tell. I personally am not one of those people, I do play pickleball, I pay to play, and I'm okay with that. I also play to pay tennis, so. I don't need to say anything else, so.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comments, yeah.
Marty Weinberg, followed by Clark Fielding, followed by Chelsea Allen.
Good afternoon, council, mayor, I'm Marty Weinberg, USA Pickleball Ambassador for the City of San Clemente. I'm here to discuss more than just the court fees, so let me mention a few other things, and I'm going to read off my notes since I'm short on time. First, regarding the light installation, the recommendation is to install the tweener lights on the top of the court fencing. The court fencing is slightly less than 10 feet tall. Most court light posts are normally between 18 to 24 feet tall. They're positioned this way with the luminaire facing downward for optimum lighting. And I believe when you install lights at 10 feet high, facing outward, there will be a glare in your eyes, and we will probably lose the ball and the lights. So I would like to know what pickleball facility installed these lights, and I would like to talk to the players before you engineer the light install. The second thing, quiet paddles. A few months ago, we had a quiet paddle demo at San G. Chris, Andy, and Samantha, you three were there, but the others weren't. So I brought in a regular paddle, and also a quiet owl paddle, and here's a quick demo of the sound, so you get a better feel of what you're voting on. I'm sure you could tell which paddle is which. Demo over. There you have it. Okay, the third topic, our tournament fundraising stopped after our first tournament, where we raised over $10,000 in just one day. Our mayor at the time, Gene James, he passed a motion not to allow SCPs for pickleball, so we haven't organized any pickleball fundraising tournaments for over two years now. I would like to see that motion overturned. Tournaments can help pay for the future of pickleball. Now, regarding the proposed fees, if any type of fee schedule is passed tonight or in the future, I would like to see those funds earmarked for pickleball. Also, couples and family rates need to be included. I also would like to see several free days a month, as well as a few free hours every day during non-prime time, to allow playtime for some of the people that can't afford to play for pickleball, or people that just want to try our sport. And let me say that paying for pickleball is a mixed bag. There are many city parks that are charging for pickleball, and some that aren't. For example, cities of Mission Viejo, La Habra, Fountain Valley, Anaheim, and Tustin all have fees. On the other hand, the City of Carlsbad, Laguna Niguel, San Juan Capistrano, and San Clemente are free. Even when I visit my son in Boulder, Colorado, I pay $12, he pays $10 as a resident for city courts to play pickleball. So I'm sure there will be many opinions and recommendations from the players that speak tonight, and I'm hoping we could all compromise on the issue. That's it. Even though we have some hiccups along the way, I'm looking forward to the future of San Clemente pickleball. Oh, one last thing. I agree with Andy, Samantha Wiley was instrumental in the construction of Steed Park. I was in the meetings, thank you.
Clark Fielding, followed by Chelsea Allen, followed by Elaine Cook, followed by Rodell Barba, followed by Shannon O'Toole. Clark Fielding, Fielding?
Fielding. Good evening, council and mayor, my name is Clark Fielding, and I live in the Shoreclips neighborhood, down the street from San Gorgonio. My wife and I have owned a home there since 2014, I pay those property taxes, I think the city gets 16%. We also own the Stretch Lab at the outlets, so we pay the sales tax as well. And when I was here last, when the decision was before the council, which I believe was improperly procedurally noticed, I'm an attorney as well, at that time, the council decided, on a temporary basis, to be revisited, to limit access, to close the courts on Saturdays and Sundays, and limit the hours, all right? Now, we're back. Since that time, I'm an attorney, I work up in Irvine, so I'm not at home Monday through Friday during limited hours, and my wife informs me that Steed is not always timely and promptly open. So tonight, the decision is whether we're trying to expand access or limit access, and I believe we heard from our city employee that the goal is to take down barriers to entry. If we're trying to impose fees and do different things, it seems to limit access. So since that time, since Saturdays and Sundays have been taken away, and hours have been limited, do you know how many times I have, and I'm a very casual pickleball player, once in a blue moon, I go with my wife, because she loves it, and some of our friends. I don't go that often, but I did go to San Gorgonio. How many times have I been and played at San Gorgonio, the park right down the street from my house? Zero, zero times. I've been to Steed once, it's not close, and we hear about it being temporary? I don't think that was set up as a temporary park. And if the city thinks that you're going to build some big pickleball complex with public funds, it's never going to happen. You didn't build the skate park, past councils, you're never going to build this big complex. In these fees, I'm an employer, a law firm, and Stretch Lab, it's very expensive to hire and employ people. So the fees to pay some of these employees to monitor and enforce, look at how much we're going to pay them and the benefits? How much are we going to end up with in terms of fees to finance or fund some down-the-road giant complex? I think it was a bait and switch, and I'll finish with Marty, I sat by him, seems like a nice guy. I didn't vote for Marty to be a voice for me, and I don't know what backroom deals were done, but it seems like we keep hearing about, well, there was some agreement. I never gave him authority, so I'd like to know what's been decided behind the scenes, and I thank you for your time. Basketball, you don't charge for that, a pool is much different, lifeguards, maintenance, all that, so it's just a court, there's not much maintenance, we shouldn't have some enforcer, you're going to be giving out tickets, citations, it's just a lot of work. Thank you.
Chelsea Allen, followed by Elaine Cook, followed by Rodell Barba.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Allen, I have lived in San Clemente for 15 years, raising my young family here. In my opinion, there's no better place to raise a family than San Clemente. I have a lot to say, so I'm going to read it if you don't mind. San G traffic has significantly dropped since the closure of the four pickleball courts. There's less noise and less traffic congestion, and the residents should be happy with the change. Just today, there were only two courts in use from 9:00 to 12:00 o'clock. My 12-year-old son loves to play pickleball and is a middle schooler at Bams. By the time he gets home from school every day, it's close to 4:00 p.m. That gives us very little time to rush over to San G to be able to play for about 45 minutes without getting kicked off right at 5:00 o'clock. Why are we closing at 5:00 when the sun is now out until after 7:00 o'clock? Please consider keeping San G open longer. Weekend play there is not an option, because it's closed, it's also closed on holidays. When kids are out of school, where are young families supposed to play pickleball? As for the quiet paddles that Marty just demonstrated for us, do you realize that those paddles range in price from $169 to $275 a paddle? If this is enforced, I would then have to go out and buy four new paddles to play with my 12- and 9-year-old son, when I have perfectly fine paddles already. Why has the tennis court at San G been closed for resurfacing for six months? It's sad to see such valuable real estate be locked up and not used for six months, which I'm sure will turn into another six months. Please prioritize getting that tennis court back up and running, it could be used as is without the resurfacing. I'm sure the tennis community would appreciate another court to use. Just yesterday, I had to drive to three different locations in order to find an empty tennis court to play on. Now, on to the proposed fees for playing pickleball in public courts. While with these new fees, my family of five would be paying $1,775 a year to play pickleball. My mom lives in Mission Viejo and pays to play at the Philippe place, but that also gives her access to multiple pools, fitness centers, and exclusive tennis courts, in addition to the pickleball courts. According to the Agenda Report, the amount of money it would cost the city to hire two employees to enforce this new pay-to-play is nearly $195,000, which means that the city would need 354 adults to purchase yearly passes just to break even, and I do not see that happening. Six days ago, we started a petition to let you all know that we are opposed to paying to play in San Clemente. The petition is at 344 signatures and counting. Please reconsider charging for playing. If this is the future of pickleball in San Clemente, then we will go elsewhere. There are more effective ways to make money, including tournaments, round robins, clinics, and city classes offered for kids. No other places offer classes for kids. Boys and girls club used to, and they no longer do. I want to thank you for the new Steed courts, and thank you for keeping half of San G open, and I have the signatures and comments for the petition for you to review. Thank you.
Elaine Cook, followed by Rodell Barba, followed by Shannon O'Toole, followed by Dave Hack.
I'm a senior citizen and have lived in San Clemente for six years. As a senior, we pay very high real estate taxes and use limited public resources. Pickleball is a way to get seniors out of the house and be social, meet new people, which is important as we age. Can I just ask the city council members, do you guys all play pickleball? The whole tenet of playing pickleball is that you don't have to know people, you just show up, you meet people, and you play. It's difficult for seniors to make friends. Here is our one avenue that you are potentially taking away from us. I've been visiting San Clemente for the past 40 years and have watched it grow. San Clemente is made of all sorts of people, rich, poor, and many cultures, and they all play pickleball. In reading the San Clemente Times, it suggested that, I quote, "There is a want for growth. We don't need any more courts, we probably don't need any lighting expenses, we just want to play pickleball." It was also quoted that fees would be needed as a way for players to chip in. I feel I already chip in with my taxes. It also said, "Only a few use it." I think there's a lot of people that use pickleball. I don't use the beaches, or the soccer fields, or caseramatica, or the trolleys, and that costs the city and is paid for by my taxes. If you want to charge for pickleball, why not charge for the fields, the beaches, the playgrounds, the surfers? Of course not. These are things that a city does for its people. If you charge the courts and need to make reservations, you are ruining the whole structure of our game. Most of the players will go elsewhere, and Steed will go from a great meeting place to a place for the wealthy. There are plenty of other places I can think of to save money for the city, a public pickleball court is not one of them. In conclusion, every resident uses some public resources, but we pay for all of them, so we can make San Clemente accessible to everyone. I hope you take these points into consideration. Thank you.
Rodell Barba, followed by Shannon O'Toole, followed by Dave Hack, followed by Jessica Fabrikant.
Good evening, mayor, city council. My name is Rodell Barba. I grew up here in San Clemente, and I'm not going to get choked out, am I? I hope not. I'm the guy, I started pickleball here in 2017, so I'm your guy. And many times, I've been up here to get the courts from chalking the courts to having actually Marty help me out, he was in my first class, I think it was my girlfriend and my sister, and I had to grab somebody to start up anyway, it's really grown a lot, I'm really happy about that. I'm currently contracted by San Juan Capistrano and Carlsbad as their contracted professional, so I know kind of what's going on with the growth of pickleball and what's happening. In all reality, in Carlsbad, they're not charging in pickleball, if you point city park, they're not charging, and also San Juan as well. And like some of the other speakers have talked about, there's courts being built all over the place, and so, you know, I feel that the Steed is, it's not really, the courts are, I mean, it's not really a park, it's really a parking lot with a bunch of courts up. I know it was done because we didn't want to get ourselves in trouble, I know that, but I do like the elaborate fences, I mean, in all reality, it could definitely, it could definitely just keep people in there, for sure. But anyway, I was thinking on my notes here that, let's see here, what did I say here? I said that, oh yeah, it definitely keep King Kong in there, for sure. Anyway, like I said before, I think fees are going to be a mistake, I think longer it's going to create a lot of animosity, and this is my idea, being in the game 12 years, my idea is very simple. Okay, at Steed, build three more courts there. I marked it off myself, you can have two going north to south and one east to west. That would give us 11 courts there, we can stay there, and, you know, I would say that that would be a good answer. I really think that one gentleman, the lawyer, or the attorney, whatever he is, he had mentioned that it would be really tough to build something gigantic, really don't need anything gigantic. I feel that lifetime, let them have the big courts and, you know, that lifestyle, big lifestyle of rich and famous. of rich and famous, let them do that. But anyway, long story short, we appreciate what Samantha does, getting things going. And it's not an easy job. Like I said, I've been in the game a long time, and I play all over, and I teach all over, I know kind of what's going on. And in all reality, I think that we should just, let us play for free, leave us alone. Give us three more courts and leave us alone. And get out and play, I'll give you all free lessons. Thank you for your time.
Shannon O'Toole, followed by Dave Hack, followed by Jessica Fabrikant.
Hello, Council. Thank you for making the time for us tonight. I'd like to try to illustrate to you the thousands of pickleball players you have in your community, and the age span. We're talking elementary school kids up to seniors. And these folks like to come together on holidays to play pickleball together, and yet you're closing our courts. We would love to get our kids out there, we would love to share this experience with them. It's a lot of laughter, it's great exercise, and it's so healthy. So you've got thousands of people in your constituency here that really want to enjoy this game and to share it with their families. So there are some procedures in pickleball you may or may not be familiar with, and that's when you come to a court and it's full, there is a place to put your paddles. And your paddle remains there, alerting the players that there's someone ready to come on the court when they finish their game. It's a done deal. It works. It's working across the United States. So the idea of a proposal to pay almost a quarter of a million dollars to have people come and monitor the courts, maybe it's just under $200,000, but that's pretty close to a quarter of a million dollars. To have people come and watch the players, take a ticket, take their money, to do something that is not necessary. Why would you spend that kind of money? Why would you allocate that kind of money? It's not needed. There's so many better places to spend it. So I caution you with that and ask you to think about that very hard. I would love to see a committee created to sit down with Samantha. She had some great ideas and some that need a little refining. And we would be happy to help her refine those ideas with experience, with knowledge. Keep in mind, again, that there's thousands of us playing pickleball, and maybe you have a dozen people who are in dissent. Let's really look at those numbers, because that does matter, impacts a lot of people. We had a reservation system during COVID that were not so bad. If we had to go back to the online electric system, then we would have to do that. We don't need booths, we don't need people sitting there taking our $2 and $5 to play. That's just not a good way to spend the money. And locking up parks, oh, Council, think about that. That's not a good precedent. You don't want to lock up the court courts. Right now, you have San Gregorio locked up on weekends, and that's just not healthy. So think about your options, let's put together a committee, let's try to stop this back-and-forth in the time and really come up with something that works, that's useful for everyone. Thank you.
David Hack, followed by Jessica Fabrikant, followed by Frank Schneider, followed by Jerry Effelman.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity. I've been resident in San Clemente for six years, pickleballer for four. We played in Irvine, Tustin, San Juan Capistrano, La Dura Ranch, so we see other locations. Love playing in San Gregorio. I was surprised to look back on the four years and think about the noise abatement, putting up a large carpet, for lack of a better term, to reduce the sound. I understand the decibel level was tested at that point and found good, and yet we're still saying, okay, we got to restrict or limit all kinds of things in those courts. The tennis court getting locked with a 10-foot fence, I'm still not clear what that does. But it's been locked, there are locks on other doors, it's now an unsafe entry on Court One. Everybody comes in one door, or before, we had a way to go around it. So now, play stops, everything's messed up because of that. I'd like to see the courts open again on the tennis court. I do want to comment that if you're looking to charge pickleballers, you realize that we're putting 16 people paying theoretically $6 each to play on a court, when you've got two players on a tennis court, I hope you're going to charge them, no, I don't hope you're going to, charge them $48 to play for an hour. That doesn't make sense either. We're getting much more use out of them, it's better for the community. Comment on Steed, I've been over there a few times, and I think it's been hinted at, see if there's a way to add some color and some interest to those courts, because they do look like a prison to me from the outside. I know we want it to be beautiful and welcoming, and it doesn't look that way. I'll comment on the salaries. I did a quick synopsis of the estimates for salaries and also the hours. San Gregorio's hours, you're going to need eight full-time people based on the number of hours that they're open. That's over 300,000, not 150,000. And that's assuming you're paying them $10 an hour instead of what seems to be the going rate of 15 to 20 an hour. If you're going to go that route, get a reservation system, put it on an app, it's available through the web, it's available on your phone, that's an easy no-brainer. I mean, every winery in the area, all the restaurants are using Tock to schedule their restaurant and the tables they're in. We can do the same with a court. So there are simpler solutions than a lot of people. I believe everybody else has covered the rest of it. The owl paddles are definitely interesting, and they're very interesting from a sound perspective, I think that's good. I think the technology is just heading there, and so there's this premium of $200 an hour for a racket, it just makes no sense, but it's going to come down. Thank you.
I'm going to read my speech today. Thank you, Mayor, and Council members. My name is Jessica Fabrikant, and I'm a resident of San Clemente. I address you today to advocate for an essential aspect of our community, and that is public access to pickleball courts. Pickleball has rapidly grown in popularity, I think that's obvious, offering individuals of all ages an enjoyable way to stay active and connect with others outdoors. As you contemplate the introduction of a fee and reservation system for court usage at Steed Park, it's imperative to ensure that this system upholds the core value of accessibility for all. I support the notion of charging a reasonable fee for playing pickleball on our public courts, if you must, to help pay for the new proposed courts at Steed. Such fees can contribute to the upkeep and enhancement of our facilities, ensuring they remain in excellent condition for years to come. However, I vehemently oppose the implementation of a reservation system for the courts. While the intention behind a reservation system may be noble, it would severely impede the accessibility of our pickleball courts. By restricting access to those who can plan ahead and secure a reservation, we inadvertently exclude a significant portion of our community who rely on spontaneous drop-in play. Pickleball should be a sport for everyone, irrespective of their ability to plan ahead. Introducing a reservation system would erect unnecessary barriers, excuse me, and curtail the amount of playtime available for all residents. It could lead to frustration and resentment among those who are unable to secure a slot, ultimately diminishing the enjoyment and inclusivity of our public pickleball courts. Instead, I propose that we uphold an open drop-in system for all courts' usage at Steed Park. This guarantees that our pickleball courts remain accessible to all members of our community regardless of their schedule. By keeping the courts open for spontaneous play, we encourage more people to engage in physical activity and cultivate a sense of community through the sport. For those individuals who prefer the structure and guaranteed court time provided by a reservation system, numerous private clubs in our area offer such amenities. Nevertheless, our pickleball, our public pickleball court should remain open and accessible to all, devoid of the restrictions imposed by reservations. In conclusion, I implore the City Council to prioritize accessibility and inclusivity when considering any changes to our public pickleball courts. Let's ensure that pickleball remains a sport for everyone in San Clemente by maintaining an open drop-in system and dismissing the notion of a reservation system. Thank you for your time and consideration.
We have several more comments.
How many more comments do we have? You thinking about taking a break, Victor?
Yeah, let's say, just a five-minute break.
Okay.
Eleven more comments, eleven.
Like a five-minute break?
Five-minute break?
Yeah.[1189.44]
We're gonna get started. If, if people could take their seats, we're gonna get started, because we do have other things on the agenda. All right, do we, uh, do we have the names of the next witnesses?
The next speakers?
Wi- wi-
Yes.
The next witness. We're gonna have them all, all testify at once, but-
Yes. All right, we'll call the, I'll recall the next several speakers up. Frank Schneider, followed by John Tilton. The next speaker declined to provide a name, so decline.
Okay, can we have order, and we're gonna start the meeting up again, and we're gonna have, I wanna say witnesses, but speakers.
Speakers, Frank Schneider-
But we're not in a trial, so.
Followed by John Tilton.
First of all, I wanna thank Samantha for all the hard work you did, and the earlier abuse was not called for, and I apologize for the pickleball community, okay? I think the biggest thing we've learned tonight, that this is just the beginning, and we need to really look into this issue in depth, in detail, and with patience. One thing I would like to recommend, as being a former member of the Board of Directors at San Clemente Golf Club for seven years, is that we have what we call the Golf Advisory, where we have two representatives from the golf club meet on a regular basis with parks and recreation, and go over different issues, et cetera. I think that that would be great to let us have inclusion, and have a say-so in what's going. We know how pickleball works, we know how it operates. I've been playing for four or five years. Frankly, I'll be eighty-three in a couple of weeks, and it's keeping me alive. I love the game, it's a drop-in game mostly, it doesn't work well with reservations, keep that in mind, but the key thing is, we now know what we have to work with. So if you would just, as you go forward, please, Marty's a hell of an ambassador, Riddell would make another good one, just give us inclusion, and let's really look at this thing closely, because the cost involved in doing it may end up costing the city more money than it would be than if we didn't charge. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Samantha, thank you.
Next speaker.
John Tilton. The following speaker declined to provide their name, and then Michael Stein.
So whoever declined, you're next.
Thank you again, gentlemen. Had a nice talk with Samantha in between the break. Frank nailed it on the head. We should have pickleball people helping give advice regarding the pickleball situation. She said she was adamant, listening to it, forming some type of a small group, so I'm very encouraged by that, and love the opportunity to work with her in the future. Personally, I'm not against fees for pickleball, and I know it's gonna bum a bunch of people out there behind me, but I adamantly am against discrimination, and I think this is one hundred percent discrimination against one group. I don't think you can signal out somebody for being black, white, gay, you know, whatever it is, I don't think you can say, "Well, they're pickleball players, so they gotta pay an extra fee." You don't charge volleyball players, you don't charge skateboarders, you don't charge basketball players, you're not charging tennis players. I think specifically charging pickleball players alone, I think, is a travesty and completely wrong. I think there are other ways, and I would like to, I had tons of revenue ideas that we can do to come up with ideas. I look forward to working with Samantha. All these people have great ideas behind it. If we can have them, you know, again, work with some of us to work with Samantha, I'm sure we can come up with something that is not just fees for pickleball. There are other ways to do it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Stein, and I'd like to thank the council for allowing us an opportunity to voice our opinions and give you some insight. Most of what I was going to say has already been said, so I'm gonna keep mine very short. We have a unique community of pickleball players in San Clemente. We have a very tight group, there's about, in the daytime, I play pickleball from nine to twelve, three to four days a week at Steed, and it's not a seventy-five-minute visit. And most of the players that are there in the mornings are not, are there for that length of time, and when I leave, some of them are still playing. We don't, we have crowds at times, but I don't think we need more than the courts we have, maybe a couple more, but certainly not to go to twenty-four courts. I just think that's just not reasonable for this community, and this community of pickleball players. I'm also not in favor of a reservation system. We have a number of players who play, who have memberships at Lifetime, who come over and play at Steed, because the reservation system is cumbersome. They, they don't like it, it's hard to get courts, you have to get on the phone, like, immediately to reserve a court at any specific time. You also have to have four players, who you have to coordinate a time and a date to play with. At Steed, you can just drop in at any time and play, and by having reservations, it precludes other people from playing on that court for ninety minutes. No one else can play on that court for ninety minutes, and that makes the other courts even more crowded. So I implore you not to go to this twenty-four-court stadium seating concept. We're very happy with the courts we have, they're crowded sometimes, but many times, it's hard to find a player, a fourth player to make a game with late in the morning. Sometimes, late in the morning, there are two, two courts completely empty. So it's not like we have an overcrowding situation. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Next several speakers. Michael Stein, followed by Kevin Pow, followed by Dan Corrales, followed by Andy Wiggins.
And if your name's been called, could, could you come up to the front and take a seat?
Kevin Pow, Dan Corrales, Andy Wiggins, and then Trish.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name's Kevin Pow, I'm a twenty-year San Clemente resident, and I'm new to pickleball. It's, we've been practicing with the city, the city provides the training, so we're, like, just finished our, or starting our third session tomorrow, so looking really forward to that, but I love this sport, it's fantastic. I'm a past, you know, racquetball player, played for twenty years, and I mountain bike, and I love free sports, you can do whatever you want, but pickleball is amazing. I met a bunch of great friends, my wife and I both, and we love the sport. I also love, you know, we usually play at San G, but I love the pickup nature of the sport, that you can just show up, you can play, you can show up by yourself and just, you know, pick up with other people that you've never met, you make new friends, and the free-going nature of it, you know, I really love. I think going with fees is completely unnecessary, it's quite expensive, as some people pointed out. Also, I think reservations are just gonna restrict play, and make it harder to play what is really a fun sport, you can just do anytime, anywhere, so those are my thoughts on the issue. I think fees should not happen. You know, I think the play the way it is is fantastic, you know, maybe some fees to support maintenance of the facilities might be warranted in a limited nature, but I agree with what everybody else has said, I think, you know, that's a, you know, kinda wrong-thinking idea, and, you know, where does it end? Do you charge fees for, you know, skateboarders or hikers using trails? You know, it's, it's just kind of absurd to target pickleball. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Dan Corrales, followed by Andy Wiggins, followed by Trish.
Hi, my name is Dan Corrales. I just wanted to speak briefly, I got a lot to say, so I'm not saying everything I wanna say, but first of all, I wanna second what was said, because it's super important. I'm, I know Marty Weinberg, but he in no way represents me, and I'd say about three hundred other people I know that are part of this pickleball player community, and we'd love to have a say. So I do plan on forming a San Clemente Pickleball Association that kind of represents us a little better. I'd love to provide feedback. I personally ran tournaments, um, as an idea for the city, on a three-day weekend with eight courts, you can generate up to about twenty-five thousand dollars per tournament. I also wanna propose selling food or soft drinks, maybe there at the little restroom facility, there's a place there for that, because we'd love to eat. We're starving, I mean, we're hungry, we're playing all day long, we're hot, and if, if you put food there, I would be there all day long. There's no reason to go lunch break, like, feed me and get back on the court. I also wanted to point out, let me look at my notes. There is, this sounds immature, but it's true, there's sadly, there's like an unspoken tennis feud with pickleball. There's some old-school tennis players that hate pickleball, and they will, they will go to their grave hating pickleball, and they will do everything they can to try and stop pickleball. I, I feel sorry for them, it's like a waste, you know, like, wow, dedicate your life to something a little more worthy, but it's your life, your choice. I do just wanna bring that up, because it seems kind of weird that there is a, just like this die-hard anti-pickleball sentiment from very, very few people that have somehow swayed this city to make choices, that the rest of the pickleball community is saying, "Nothing was broke, didn't need to be fixed." Right now, nothing is broke, doesn't need to be fixed, we're happy with those eight courts, if you wanna make it better, food and drinks, maybe some tournaments, that'll help generate revenue. Let's see. Court reservations, if, if that's implemented, I'll tell you from experience, last time that happened, I won't mention names, but some people that were consulted with, that were ambassadors, would just hoard court reservations within twenty seconds of them being available, they'd create numerous email accounts, and then reserve all the courts, and then they would just hand them out to friends or sell them to people. So I would hate to see that happen, it's a huge waste of court space, it's sad that it's abused that way, but I guarantee you, it will happen. And lastly, it doesn't feel nice to be picked on as a pickleball player. We're not leagues playing on these courts, these are families, I take my wife, I take my little daughter, I gotta pay for them to come watch me play and hang out with me. No, you know, we're not renting the venue, we're not a league renting softball fields or basketball courts to use this, although, again, if we did a tournament, it's a different story, but we're just families hanging out, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For your comments, appreciate them.
Andy Wiggins, followed by Trish, followed by George Spooner.
Good evening, good evening, council, my name's Andy Wiggins, I'm a longtime San Clemente resident, class of ninety-six from San Clemente High School. I wanna thank the council and its staff for continuing to support the pickleball community. I echo a lot of the same sentiments of speakers before me in their opposition to any fees, reservation system, or any other restrictive measures on pickleball play at Steed Park. The current open-play system is one of the things that has made pickleball become so popular in San Clemente. I can attest to that, I showed up to San Giorneo Park back in August of two thousand and twenty-three, had never played pickleball in my life, and I've become an adamant pickleball player ever since. Had there been a reservation system, a membership, or any other restrictive measures in place, that likely would not have happened. The San G community was displaced to the beautiful courts that you guys built at Steed Park, thank you for that. The pickleball community has continued to thrive, and the open-play policy is one of the reasons for it. If money is needed to maintain a city-owned park, then I ask why users of the other facilities like skate parks, playgrounds, fields, tennis courts, basketball courts, and on and on, are not paying for the maintenance of those facilities? If a state-of-the-art pickleball facility, a state-of-the-art pickleball facility sounds great until someone is asked to pay for it. I urge the council to use San G for any restrictive measures, and leave the play at Steed Park alone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Trish, followed by George Spooner, followed by Kevin Stanley, followed by Aaron Carlo.
Trish, I don't see her seated here, is-
Is she gone, Trish?
She, and George.
George Spooner?
George here, I don't see.
Okay, you're up, yes. George Spooner, followed by Kevin Stanley, followed by Aaron Carlo.
My name's George Spooner, and I moved to San Clemente with, a couple of years ago, and one of the reasons I did move here was because I did wanna find out where pickleball courts were. We did take the lessons, we did learn, we're avid players. One of the things we were very surprised with was the change that we had, understanding that the City Council, within the last three or four years, has been against pickleball. I have clients that are board members of the PPA and MLP, and both of them are watching these meetings and stuff to see what goes on with San Clemente pickleball. They do have the big two, two biggest ESPN televised tournaments here, they bring millions of dollars into this city with tourism, bringing Annalise Waters in here, John Brothers come in, all the major players come in here, and San Clemente benefits tremendously from those tourism dollars. I don't know why San Clemente is gonna implement a policy at this point where there'll be not one court of free pickleball in this city. San Clemente has long stand, and, and I know Mark Anmeyer and a few other people and stuff have come out and said, "You know, we're pro-pickleball, we love to go to the tournaments, we go on TV, we say we're gonna be future players," and you know what, and now we're going against everything that the city has stood for. Pickleball is a healthy lifestyle, people are out there playing, people are social, you know, it helps you in your spiritual, you're out in the sun, you're relaxing, you know, you get to use those, the energy. I know we went through COVID and it caused a lot of problems, but what we should do is, we should probably postpone any decision on the resolution tonight, get with the community and stuff with regards to this, and work with, you know, Samantha, why they come up with a better system, because a lot of people in the community, you know, San Clemente is an elderly community, it is more, there are more senior citizens here, I think, than any other place in the area. Those people live on a fixed budget, they don't have money to pay you those kind of fees, and the fees are pretty high. They're not, they're not anything that people can sneeze at, I mean, you're fucking talking a family of two or three people, paying thousands of dollars to play pickleball, where before, in a healthy lifestyle, that was free, and it should be free, you know, for everyone to play and enjoy. It's same as going to the beaches, same as going to the parks, but if you are gonna implement a fee structure, you really should do it across all venues. Should be the dog park, takes a lot of maintenance, the parks, you know, the mowing of the lawns for soccer, baseball, everything else, those all are expensive to take care of, you're watering the fields, you don't charge a lot of money for all of those things, and you're charging pickleball, you know, people seven hundred, you know, five to seven hundred dollars to play pickleball, where there's no maintenance. Maybe what they need to do is, they need to efficiency orient our pickleball setup the way it's done, you could use electronic timers to set the schedules and stuff, you don't have to have rangers go to the gates and open them up, you can do all that electronically and stuff, and pre-program from somewhere else. It'll make your life so much easier, where you can open on holidays as well, and make it more accessible to everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you for your opinions.
Kevin Stanley, followed by Aaron Carlo.
Is Aaron here too?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, City Council. My name's Kevin Stanley. In addition to playing pickleball every day here in San Clemente, I'm also a bartender at Asada Cantina, so I basically go play pickleball, I play on the tour right now, I was one thirteen in the last MLP draft, so that's just, basically like bartending fuels the passion of pickleball, so I'm kind of the local legend here, basically, and I wanna say that there are some things that I do wanna touch up on, a lot of good things that have been said from all the other people who are trying to, you know, I say get rid of fees, find some sort of organization at Steed Park, which is super important, so I'm gonna start off with just a couple of things. First, like, we need to fix the locks, locks don't work, so we gotta start off with, you know, the infrastructure first, I think, before we start talking about employees and everything. Also, I am a pickleball nomad, I've been to every open-play you could probably think of, from all the way down to San Diego County, kind of over to Central California, so I've kinda seen what works and what doesn't work. A reservation system, let's talk about one, for example, Bobby Riggs used to start at open-play, five dollars, right? It was originally private, they made it public, so they decided five-dollar open-play, all-day open-play. Then they had the reservation system, and so now you can only get a court, you have to book it like two weeks in advance, like, it's crazy down there. So that's like, Encinitas is the Mecca of pickleball, basically, and so that's kind of how they're doing it, but they're a private corporation, so that's a little different. And then we've got Points Set Apart, which is super cool, it's like an open-play system, you've got four rec courts, two challenge courts, and it's just like a vibrant community, a parking lot right there, a dog park, it's really cool. I like the city of Carlsbad, honestly, I think we should mirror their pickleball practices on us all the way around, because, and when you call a city guy, he comes and opens up the gate, like, there are two gates that were locked, basically, and one of them would be, like, you know, one of the guys is lazy, he's not opening up the locks, so you call, "Hey, can you open up this lock so we can have both doors open?" Comes right away, opens it up, and then something for revenue generating, just for you guys, 'cause I know you guys want some money. Basically, there are pickleball vending machines that are being recreated, I have a lot of friends that are getting super involved in that, so if we fix the locks at Steed Park, or we get some sort of, like, just general security going on, we can generate some revenue from this disposable sport, 'cause that's what we're calling it now, all the pickleballs are disposable, all of our paddles are disposable, that's where we can get the money from, so thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron Carlo.
Hi, council members, I've, I've lived in the city for, I don't know, twenty-something years, I was in two-four before that, thank you very much for your support of two-four, by the way. So, the great thing about pickleball, obviously, I think you guys figured out, was it doesn't have what I call the tennis problem, and in tennis, you kinda have to have a group. You don't have to do that, pickleball, that's why everybody loves it, and I think you can see too, from the people here, the diversity involved. I've played with people, like Frank, who's eighty-three, he said, right? I've played with him a bunch of times, I've played with people that are like ten years old. You can't do that in any other sport, it's not possible, okay? So that's why this is so popular, and why everybody likes to do it, and to take that away, or to have any hindrances on that, would be a travesty to the city, and a lot of the pro players that have come here say this is one of their favorite places to play, not just at Lifetime, but at Steed sometimes. So it's a really great place, and you don't wanna do anything that's gonna diminish that vibe that you got in this great city of ours. that you got in this great city of ours. I kind of feel like, and if this is wrong, I apologize, but I kind of feel like this was looked at as a revenue-generating opportunity, that we were looked at as a revenue-generating opportunity. And if that's the case, I really hope you put that out of your mind and take that away. And I know you got to get revenue. I know you got to run the city, but don't look at us as that opportunity. Tournaments, great way to do that. The other things people have talked about. One idea my dad said, he's played at courts where they have coin-operated or credit card-operated lights. So if you can put lights, that can offset the cost of power there without having to, you know, charge, hire people to monitor and all that kind of stuff. And that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, yeah.
Mayor, that was our last speaker.
All right, so we, let's start with questions for Samantha, if anyone has questions for Samantha. Do we, do we need the?
If you have questions for staff, you should leave the public hearing open and then.
Any questions for Samantha?
Just really quickly, so other operations that we have for Parks and Recs, I think, thinking parks themselves. Could you explain if I wanted to rent out, say, a park bench to host a party? A birthday party underneath the awnings there? What's the process there?
We have, I think you're referring to the party rental process or picnic rental process. We do have a policy that allows residents and non-residents to reserve picnic areas within parks that ensures that they are getting use of those tables within a specific timeframe. If there's not a reservation in place, then the tables that are at question here would be first come, first served. I want to note, though, if somebody's at those tables and you show up and you have a party at 11:00 a.m., those individuals that are there would be asked to leave because you have priority use of that space. And there's a fee for that.
Yeah. And then when there's not there, those areas are free to use?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So one question that I have, because I think somebody, some, the last speaker at least suggested that we were looking at this as a revenue generation, which would be, but I think it came up in the context of people wanted to build a large facility of multiple pickleball courts. And then we said, okay, if we want to build that, we have to get some revenue for that. Is that how, your recollection of how this came about, or?
Yeah, I think the, the goal is, and Andy might be able to provide more insight on that. The fees that are here certainly cover the costs of what would be some hourly staff. And Andy, do you want to provide additional insight on?
Yeah, I'm glad to do that. I think the mayor's correct. I think what we were looking at, or at least what we had heard in the past, is that we would want to expand our pickleball facilities. And we wanted to look at ways to be able to do that. We, as you know, we did, we did expend just over a million dollars to build the courts that we have, and there was some talk about, well, if we can, if we can charge some fees and we can generate some more resources, could we have more pickleball courts? And that was, that was, I think, the genesis of this. And it was in some conversations, at least with some of the pickleball players, is, you know, how do we, how do we keep this going? How do we keep the momentum going? How do we build more courts? And that, and fees is one way to do that. So that's kind of how that started. In terms of the number, I think the city council had directed, and I thought it was 24, but I've heard, you know, it's been, it's been all over the board a little bit. I've heard 24, I've heard 36, I've heard different numbers. But I think the city council kind of landed on plan for a 24-court facility in the undeveloped portion of Steed Park. That's what I think we landed on.
Well, if you want to follow up on Andy's.
Yeah, I actually would like to, because I was part of that discussion. I think it's important we clarify the record here, because it seems like we've got a lot of different directions we're going. We, we, we made the decision to limit the courts at San G, not because we don't like pickleball, we love pickleball. It's because of the noise problem for the neighbors there. And frankly, litigation, litigation surrounding that, okay? That's the reality. We would love to have them all open, but we've got, we've got the city's interest to look after, right? We don't, we're not trying to build and pay for with city money a 24-court facility. That was never, that's never been the plan. If that type of facility is built, it's always been discussed as a public-private partnership to try to make sure that the city gets the revenue that Lifetime's getting right now from those big tournaments. We would love to get that revenue. I agree that the pros love coming here, but right now Lifetime gets all of that. We don't even have any hotels. We don't get any TOT or hotel taxes from that. So we could get a lot more revenue if we hosted a big tournament like that. And there's a lot of people in those professional organizations that would love to partner with the city and use that private money to build on our public land. That is the plan there. It's not, we're not trying to generate revenue here to build a 24-court facility. To the extent we, we did generate any revenue, the idea has always been to, to put that back into more courts at San G, but on the other side of the park where we could, we could not have that issue with neighbors being directly adjacent to the courts. That's where the investment might go, right? So I think we've heard a lot of different things. I want to make sure we clarify. That's where we are. I've known I've been part of this from the very beginning. This isn't a money grab or anything like that. This is an attempt to catch up with this large momentum that we're seeing today and that we know about, about making sure that we have the capacity to handle all of the interest. It's not meant in any way to be some kind of way for the city to make more money. And so I just want to make that point, because it seems like we need to have that foundation as we launch into this discussion. And again, a discussion that this is the very, very starting point of, not the endpoint, and that the council tasked Samantha with a thankless job of trying to get the ball rolling here, which I think she did a great job of doing, knowing that we're not going to end up there, but we need to start somewhere. And that's where I think we've, we've started here, and that's why it's so important to hear all this public discussion so that we can start that discussion moving in the right direction.
So Rick, you had a?
Yeah, just to follow up with Andy, and I'm under the impression that if we have a sport that generates money, like specifically pickleball, that we take revenue from, that we actually are required to put that money back into that specific sport. It doesn't go to a general fund.
Yeah, I think maybe the closest comparison might be the golf course, where, you know, we, the golf, the golf revenue stays at the golf course, and we use it for operations of the golf course. And so we, the swimming pool, we have to subsidize the swimming pool, of course. We don't, we aren't able to cover all the costs of the swimming pool, but the money that we do generate does offset some of the operations of the swimming pool. That's correct. Fees, fees are, fees have to be charged for costs, for actual costs, and that's the difference between a fee and a tax. That's correct.
All right, so is there any other questions for Samantha?
Yeah, Samantha, does the city currently have any plans with our existing pickleball facilities for tournaments?
We haven't looked back into that. I can tell you that staff have, I have an eager team of sports staff who want to start doing some leagues at Steed Park. But there has been some apprehension because we're, I think we're still getting used to that new operation. And certainly, tournaments are on the table. We are not allowing them at San Gregorio, but I do think Steed Park is a good venue for that as well. We want to be cognizant of parking at this point too, though, as the softball fields are very busy during the week, so.
Has the city looked into concession stand out there at the restroom building that has space there? Is there any plans for concession, food and drink?
Yeah, great question. So interestingly enough, Steed Park, the baseball fields, we actually have a city-owned, operated concession stand. So it's not impossible to certainly extend that operation into the existing, what is a kind of a snack bar. There's some health department issues we'd have to kind of work through, but totally feasible. And something that, to an extent, makes sense, because we do already have an operation going on at the baseball fields. It could be expanded.
And that would be at a different location, not at the pickleball courts, but where the existing?
Correct. Yeah, so the restroom facility at the skate park and pickleball area has a concession stand roll-up. It has plumbing that has no fixtures in it, so it needs a little.
No contract or contract envisioned?
Correct. It's, right now, it's used for storage.
There was a number of comments made about the locks at Steed Park. Is there a problem opening them on time or what? I didn't quite follow the issue of the lock issue at Steed.
Sure, I can give some more detail to that as well. So the long-term goal, and I hear from Public Works that they're in the process of just getting that through manufacturing. They are going to install a single gate on both sides of what is kind of that breezeway down the center aisle of the courts. So then there will, there will only be two locked gates at that court. Right now, every court has to be individually locked in the evening, and that's the park rangers that do that. I think in speaking with Community Development Director Otamian and also Trevor Maloche, our park ranger, oftentimes, when they're out en route in the morning, they might get hung up somewhere, so they're, they can be late sometimes. But the goal is always to open at 6:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions or comments when, when we're in for this discussion.
I have one, I have one question that Councilor Nobuck reminded me of, and I think you almost got there. But we had heard some discussion about a restriction on doing fundraiser, doing fundraisers. I think that is applicable to San G, but it, I'd like to know, because if there still is one for, for Steed, I'd like to make a motion that we revisit that and do consider allowing fundraisers at Steed. Do you know the answer to that, Samantha?
Yeah, the previous council decided to not allow tournaments at San Gregorio. That was very specific to that location. I don't see any action that's been taken regarding Steed Park at this point. So I would consider that if we got an application, it would go through the special event permit process.
Okay, so people could do a special event permit application for a fundraiser at the Steed courts?
Yes, I want to say that there are some semantics that we'd have to work through. When we, that would be potentially taking the court offline for the weekend. You would lose those eight courts, potentially. So again, an abundance of caution to not totally take away public access to pickleball. I think we would want to work through that if we're going to give a tournament all eight courts, or is it six courts?
We could have a tournament with less than eight courts, three or four.
Right, we would want to work the nuances to just continue to ensure some public access if you're not participating in the tournament.
Or any other questions of Samantha?
Or maybe we could open the San G just for that weekend. Just a thought. All right.
Question, someone mentioned the, during COVID, we had a reservation, online reservation system. Could you speak to that, what was going on there?
Yeah, that was at a point in time where we had to really control the number of people visiting our courts. I think we all remember that period in our lives. And the city recreation division initiated reservation-based pickleball use. And you could sign up, I think it was at 6:00 a.m., and the courts would fill up. I can say from the staff perspective, it was met with mixed reviews. I personally received phone calls from people who felt that, I had a phone call from a mother whose teenagers were bullied off of the courts by adults who didn't want to give up their reservation time. So it's not to say everybody is that way, but I do know that there are some bad apples out there, and unfortunately, that can ruin it for the bunch. We hope it doesn't. But I think it was, it was a mixed bag, if you will. And that was really the intention, learning from that, that staff are helpful on site to compel people to use their best judgment for good behavior.
All right, seeing no further questions, we'll close the public hearing and then we'll open it up for discussion. Or, the public hearing is closed on this matter, and is there anyone that wants to start? Or I can start if, or someone wants to make a motion?
Well, I'll just have a couple of comments. First of all, we appreciate everyone that's shown up tonight. Pickleball is a wonderful, growing sport. We want to continue growing. We want to make that available to our citizens. One concern that our council has, not all of us, but some of us, and I'm one of them, that pickleball needs to be in the right location. Around the nation, we begin to see lawsuits against cities because of the noise problem. We have that here with San Gregorio. We have, we're in litigation right now over the noise at San Gregorio. Steed was developed for the purpose of being able to close San Gregorio. So I hope in the future, we focus, continue to focus on Steed and give the residents of San Gregorio the relief that they're entitled to, the relief that we all would like to enjoy if we happen to live right next to a pickleball court. Regarding the issue of fees, Councilman Duncan is correct. This isn't, this isn't a money grab. It's a, you know, we invested a million dollars when budget was tight in order to facilitate the pickleball facilities for our community, and we need to continue doing that. And when we consider fees, what I'd like to ask our council, my colleagues, to consider is if we go with any fees, that the fees be focused on primarily on non-residents, number one. Number two, that if we have a fee system in place, that we reduce the cost of the, of the staff to help generate more fees for the city as opposed to just covering staff time by having a part drop-in schedule and a part computerized schedule, so that some people can get on the computer and schedule if they've got a family member, a family reunion, a gathering where they'd like a court or two, and they'd like to reserve it a week or two or three in advance. And again, if those courts during that, during the computerized schedule time are not being used, the drop-in players are free to use that space. So I'd like to see sort of a bifurcation there, allowing, allowing mechanism for both. And I'd like, in future staff analysis, I'd like to have a little more financial detail on the cost of maintenance and the cost of expanding Steed, not to the master plan of 24, but to use the existing area. I think one of the speakers tonight mentioned that there's the ability for three additional courts, one at, two at the side, and two at the end and one at the side. I'd like to see the cost of doing that and the financial analysis of having a fee system that covers those costs. And, and I'm not committed to fees. I just think if we go down the road of fees, it needs to be for the benefit of our citizens, non-citizens paying a higher rate, bifurcation on the scheduling, and less staff time, less staff salaries involved, more of an honor system where people that do schedule or people that show up have a timeframe that they are logically allowed to use. And when they go beyond that, we sort of have an honor system. I think the players recognize that, and I think will cooperate with that. I don't think we need park rangers down there monitoring constantly. I just think that's an expense that we can hopefully avoid. I'd like to see that concession stand operated and we issue a contract for someone to be in there. It sounds like a moneymaker to me. You know, when I go down to Steed and look at the players, it's crowded almost all the time, and I'm thinking, man, if I was selling cokes and chips at this place, I'd, you know, I'd retire twice, you know? So I think we need to consider that. So those are my little comments right now. But I'm in favor of a little more analysis, but I'm not prepared to proceed on any fees this evening.
Rick, you want to go or? I'll go, yeah. You know, I think we probably heard 50 good ideas this evening about how we move forward on it, on this issue. I mentioned earlier that when we came up with this as a city council, it was in an effort to bring this discussion to the forefront. I think we've done that. I don't think it's ready, obviously. I think it needs a lot of work. But we probably knew that it would take a lot of work, and it's going to take a lot more community involvement, because we have different ideas about how we should move forward. There's not, there's some consensus on some issues, but there's, on other issues, there's not. So I did hear someone mention that we should get, you know, the community involved, and that may mean that, and unfortunately, a city council meeting is not the best place to hear all these ideas, deliberate on them. And I think some type of meeting among, community meeting among, with you and the leaders and anybody else that considers themselves a leader and wants to give their idea, have a couple of forums and community meetings where we hear all this and come up with a proposal that addresses the concerns that have been raised by members and will continue to be raised by members about fees. I know when I first looked at the fee schedule, I thought, you know, with my $75 a week city council salary, I probably couldn't afford to play pickleball.
You get $75 a week?
Yeah. So it's, you know, those are things that we all need to consider. The reservation system that was mentioned. Some people have said, you know, the status quo is perfect. I think we need more input from, from everybody. We probably will never get a consensus from everybody, but I think, you know, we have an expertise out there in the community, people that have been working on this, that have experienced running tournaments, that have experience from other venues out there. I know that one of the things she, Samantha was asked to do was look at the models from other cities, and I think that's what she did. That was her, her take on it. But, you know, not everything that works in another city. But, you know, not everything that works in another city works for San Clemente, and San Clemente is a lot different. It's a different, it's different than any other community around here, and we're going to, I believe, you know, follow the direction of our, our community, at least I am. And I think we need more work, and at the appropriate time, one of us will make a motion, however we see fit, to send this out for further work and development and consensus building with the community and pickleball leaders to find the right balance for all these issues that were raised tonight.
Yeah, I, yeah, I heard somebody talk about us mirroring Carlsbad. I think that's a great idea. I worked down there for a few years. I just wish we could mirror their revenue, because with giant hotels and Legoland and an airport, they just write checks down there, so it's really, really great. But, so we're not, so we are, it is a challenge for revenue, and not revenue to go to the city coffers and to go something else, to pay for pickleball, just like we charge for the pool to try to kind of supplement the pool. I will tell you, I visit Steed at least a couple of times a week. If you've been up there, you've probably seen me walk around, the only guy like in Levi's and a shirt walking around, you know, without a paddle. But I, I'm sold on pickleball as a sport and as a socialization. It's not going anywhere. I have people that come up and go, oh, why are we doing this for something that's a fad? It's not a fad, it's, it's staying. So with that said, and by the way, the courts up there, I have to disagree with anybody who says that they're temporary courts. Those courts are not temporary courts. They're going to be there for a long, long time, and it's too bad that somehow they didn't get built up where the master plan said they should have gotten built and moved for expansion up there, but they didn't, but they're there. There's only a couple of sports that don't pay, baseball, everything pays except for tennis, and I don't think that many people play tennis anymore. I think we'll be able to take care of them. Skating, I think we should keep it on the, down low about skaters not paying money since we built the temporary pickleball courts in the place where the skate park was supposed to go, so let's just stay low-key and let the skater skate. So what does that leave us with as pickleball? So the fact that it is so popular, you're kind of selling the reason why we should have some participation from the residents, and I really think we should. Now, the fees, I think, are too high. I mean, very much too high. I know it's practices of other cities, but we don't need somebody sitting up there monitoring it. We just, you know, especially when sometimes they're open, sometimes they're closed, sometimes it's open play, closed play. If we could do it on some kind of app or something, would, would just, so it doesn't cost us anything, we could lessen those fees by probably 100%, at least, maybe more. And so, well, okay, anyway. So I think a pickleball committee, kind of like the golf committee, is a great idea to get some people that play the sport all the time or participate. I know our golf committee is consisted of golfers that golf there every day, know what's going on, and we don't have the insight to do that, and I think you do, and I think you should have a, a big part of that. I think the tournaments or the raise the revenue another way is really, really intriguing. I really, really do. I think if that could be something that we could do consistently without lessening the access to everyday players, I think we should definitely explore that as the snacks stand. Anything we can do to raise money, trust me, charging people to do anything, you know, pay to play, is not optimum. It really is not, but we do have to look at revenue in the long term. You want lights at Steed Park? I don't, you don't want lights at Steed Park? Oh, that's great to know. Well, hey, check that down, Andy. We don't need to pay for those. Cancel that light order, okay? We don't need lights. Okay. But I do know what we do need is we do need more courts, and if they're going to be at San Gregorio, they ought to be over by the freeway where it's not going to bother anybody, where you could have access to them seven days a week, and nobody would be complaining. That is one of the things that we do need revenue for. So anyway, I think my recommendation is going to be certainly that we put this on, on hold, get some more input, maybe find a better practice to where we can implement this, where we can kind of, we might have to split the baby probably to some extent, but I really think we can come to some kind of, some kind of conclusion here that's not going to be too horribly painful for anybody, and we can just move this along and get people back to playing pickleball.
Any other comments?
I think we've, we've exhausted it. I did want to thank everybody for coming out and spending the time, especially those with small kids like me that have come out here. I know I've seen some running around back there that are gone now, put back to bed, thankfully, or doing their homework. Really appreciate all the public output or input for us, and I'm going to support, yeah, the motion to have us look further at this. I think we've gotten some good guidance. I don't think I need to ask. I think city manager and Samantha, I think, have heard what, what we're saying, and I like the idea of being open to getting some more public input. To make one final point, the reason that the temporary, non-temporary eight courts were built at that location as opposed to where we would want them to be is that's the location we could build them immediately. I distinctly remember this. It would have taken longer to put them somewhere, anywhere else. So that was the one location we could get them built in a matter of months, and we did that extraordinarily quickly, if you remember that. So that's why we did that, right? Everything is done for a reason. So thanks again. I think we'll end up at a good spot. I'd love to get some more staff input on the ideas that have come out from y'all out there and, and repeated by us on the dais here, and stay involved and come back when we, when this comes back for more, more input, and, you know, we'll get to a good place. I'm confident about that. Thank you all.
March?
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to reiterate some of the things I said. First off, thank you to the community for coming out tonight and showing your support or your ideas, or just hearing your voices is really important to having this thriving community that we do. In terms of pickleball itself, I was out at Steed, I got to play for the first time at Steed Park about a month ago, and it was really nice. I joined with my, my brother-in-law, and it was great. Just hopped on the court, it was open, found some other people to play with. I got my butt kicked by a 70-year-old couple. It was fantastic, and it was really fun to be part of that community. I understand some would like to have an option to say, hey, if I have a family event, I would want to be able to reserve a court, say for a birthday party of some sort, and that is appealing to me, but I don't necessarily want all courts to be reserved. So I think there's some compromise that we can find here where, you know, two or three courts are reservable for a certain amount of time in the day, and if they're not being used, people can access them, very much like you would at a park picnic area. And then if, yeah, the other courts would be open for free play of any sort, whether some would be at Steed Park and maybe the reserved ones are at San G, I don't know. I will leave that to you to figure out. I also love the idea of having some sort of tournaments going on. I love the idea of having some sort of professional store, that we can generate revenue that way. I think there's just a lot of other ways to generate revenue for our city instead of doing a per-person fee, maybe rent out the whole court for an event, I don't know, just things to bring back. Also, I do think that they should be open on holidays. It's when families get together, they want to have something fun to do, let's make sure that, that they remain open on those days. I think that's all I have to say. Oh, sorry, one more thing. I like also the idea of having some sort of pickleball league. That could be a revenue generating thing as well. We have baseball leagues, soccer leagues, softball leagues, something to look into as well.
So I'm going to make a motion, if there's nothing else. I'm not sure how I want to characterize it, but I would ask our Parks and Recreation Director Samantha to put together an advisory board of concerned citizens to address and evaluate systems for fees, reservations, tournaments, lighting, Steed Park versus San G opening, holiday and weekend openings, and a league. And I don't know if there's anything else that I missed that...
Just the, when you mentioned the association with the players, I think the, the USA Pickleball Association, we have our ambassador, we've got a new association, it sounded like one of the gentlemen said they're forming a new local San Clemente-based organization, probably hasn't been formed yet, but I presume that your, part of your, your motion includes having staff incorporate the key players, leaders in the pickleball community.
All the key players or even interested parties to hold public hearings.
Like, well, like maybe a workshop or something that was at some specific place in time, you know, almost like a town hall?
Yeah, yeah. So, and with no particular timetable, like you don't have to come back, because I think one of the problems we had was maybe we put too much of a time pressure on you to get something to us, and so we would like to, you know, have it thoroughly thought out and vetted, and, and that may take a little bit of time to get everybody's input. So I don't know if that's clear enough for a motion, and...
That's clear, and we do have a motion on the table for Mayor Cabral. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Your button.
I had to push the button.
Oh.
I tried to, but you didn't even, you seemed to... I knew that you couldn't find the button.
I was just gonna, I was trying to speed things up. All right.
And now you should all have a button to vote. So it was a motion by Mayor Cabral.
Can we have a quick discussion, real quick? My only, my only thing with this is I feel like we got a lot of input tonight. I don't, I don't know that we need a full another town hall meeting to bring up all these same ideas again, and maybe I'm wrong on that, but I, I think a lot of voices were heard tonight, a lot of issues brought up. Maybe, I mean, I wouldn't mind just a smaller group that maybe work and talk about this with Beaches Parks and Rec.
I think that the motion entails Samantha having discretion to determine what's the best way to get that public input. She's already talked to some residents, so I think we're there.
And I think people, the organizations, people interested will reach out to her and let her know they want to be heard on this.
Yeah, so giving her the discretion to find that input, that, that sounds good.
Yeah. All right, is there any other discussion? All right, well, we'll vote then.
No, I already voted.
All right.
Oh, you did.
Motion carries five zero. Excuse me, motion carries five zero, and that is to, for the Beaches Parks and Recreation Director to form an advisory board of concerned citizens and further evaluate the process.
All right, next, and thank you all for, for being here and your input on this, and it's, it's...
We appreciate it. Next item?
If you wanted to waste room to...
Oh, let's get it started.
No, let's, yeah, they're, they're, they're pretty quiet, they're a pretty quiet group.
Okay. Mayor and council, the, the next item on the agenda is the eighth public hearing and introduction, first reading of an ordinance finalizing the district map to bring the pier bowl community of interest into one district, District Three. This item was agendized by council for consideration of introducing an ordinance to bring forth map 120, again, just bringing the, the pier bowl community of interest into one district, which is District Three, and I'm available for questions. We do have some speaker cards, and you will need to open the public hearing.
We need to open up the, the, the public hearing. We're going to open up the public hearing, and is there any questions on this? We've been working on this for six months, so maybe eight. So no questions, all right? Public comments?
Amanda Q., followed by Sarah Schneider, followed by Wayne Eggleston.
Oh, I think I've been to every district hearing, public hearing. I support map 120 since map 109 divided the pier bowl area, which is part of the pier bowl specific plan and part of the general plan amendment, and basically, it meets the legal requirements, which, to the extent practicable, the geographic integrity of any local neighborhood or local community of interest should be respected and included within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation in a matter that minimizes its division. A community of interest is a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. Also, council district boundaries should be easily denfiled and understandable by residents to the extent practicable. Council districts shall be bounded by natural and artificial barriers, by streets or by boundaries in the city, and I'm glad that map 120, I've been supportive of this from the beginning, and I'm glad that this is back on the agenda. Thank you so much, and I've supported Wayne Eggleston's concerns regarding this from day one. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Sarah Schneider?
Hello, Sarah Schneider, founder of the Southwest San Clemente Alliance. I'm glad to be back up here to talk about map 120 again. Before I talk about that, I just wanted to briefly think, talk about the pickleball thing. One public comment that was made that I think the council should consider acting quicker on is why aren't the courts adjusting their time to reflect daylight savings? So 7:00 PM closed time on weeknight seems like that should move pretty quickly so kids and teens and people after school can use it. First, I want to take a moment to commend the city council on their decision-making regarding district maps. This task has not been easy, and people have had some disagreements along the way, but I appreciate the unity the council has shown in leading the city to its first-ever district map. It is notable that at every critical moment, the five city council members have made appropriate decisions along the way to yield a district map that best adheres to state law in map 109 or map 120. I think the council has shown the city that they have listened to the public, they have followed state guidelines, and they have settled on a map that hits all the markers for legality. Map 109 and map 120 are essentially the exact same map with a very slight difference. Map 120 fully corrects map 109's small error in making the minor technical adjustments to rightfully unite the pier bowl neighborhood. So map 120 emerges as the map that follows state laws and the Fair Maps Act most appropriately. And so, and we've talked about the, the legal requirements, I don't need to go into that, but I just really wanted to say thank you to the council for bringing this back up. I know, you know, it's not easy, there is some contentious debate around it, so thank you for bringing this up for a final adjustment to ensure that every community of interest is undivided. The public overwhelmingly supports map 120 and looks forward to moving forward as a city with this very fair map. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Wayne Eggleston.
Pick your time, Dad.
Peter, I got real close here. After the pickleball, I need a pizza and a beer, quite frankly, you know? Thank you, Sarah. You're very kind, thank you so much. You know, this has been a, a long road, hasn't it? To say the least. And over a period of months, each and every one of you, either by voting or by public, public or private comments, have supported map 120, all of you have. And I have some wonderful award-winning photos up here. You know, initially, it said that Avenue Victoria divided appropriately, Avenue Victoria does not divide appropriately, because what happens is it comes down to this street right here, which is Monterey Lane. A part of Monterey Lane is a very narrow, one-way street, and on the left-hand side is one district of District Number Four, and the other side is District Number Three. As you can see, this is a mixed-use area. Southwest predominantly is a single-family neighborhood, and so it is not, the map that we have now is, does not have a community interest, and it's not appropriately geographically contiguous, to say the least. So if we could just go through these award-winning photos here, that would be great. This is still Monterey Lane, as we're coming down the street there, keep going. This is a wonderful photo, because this is at the end of it, and the map that we have now jeers, goes to the right and then goes to the ocean, as you can see where that Jeep is there. So it splits Park Del Mar. Can you believe it splits Park Del Mar into two different voting districts? So I really support map 120. Please do the right thing, finally, because we can, the pier bowl is... Please do the right thing, finally, because we can, the pier bowl is one unit, it is a historic area and it is, has its own specific plan. And we all need to be united in this, to say the least. And some will say, well, we're going to get sued. How can we get sued about correcting something that needs to be righted? It needs to be righted this time around. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Any other speakers?
No further speakers.
All right. Any questions for staff on this issue?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, let me, let me close the, I'm going to close the public meeting and is there, do you want to make your motion? Make your motion.
Sure, I'll move to, sorry, get this right, introduce and connect, no, that's the action. I'll move to accept map one twenty as our final district map.
Okay, and there's a second on that already. Is there any discussion? I, I think, I, I just want to say, I think we've all made our positions clear. We've, we've all debated this many times and we'll debate it one more time, but I'm, I'm ready to, to vote on this also.
Should the motion include the adoption of the ordinance?
Yeah, well, doesn't it?
No, it just said approve map one twenty.
Sorry, sorry.
Mayor Protim Inmeyer, would you like me, I'll read it for you.
Let the clerk, hold on, let, let the city clerk.
Okay, yeah, if you'll read it, thank you.
The motion on the floor is, is motion by Mayor Protim Inmeyer, second by council member Duncan, and it is to introduce and conduct the first reading of ordinance number seventeen seventy-five entitled An Ordinance of the City of, City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, amending San Clemente Municipal Code, Section two zero, two point zero four point one-one, to finalize the district map and bring the pier bowl community of interest into one district, District, District Three. And by introducing that ordinance and adopting it at the next meeting, it will bring map one twenty as your final district map.
Thank you for helping me on that.
So you can go ahead and start your voting. The motion carries four one with Mayor Cabral voting no.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next item?
Next item on the agenda is item seven C. It is a public hearing, weed abatement twenty twenty-four, order to abate nuisances by having weeds, rubbish, and refuse removed from vacant and unoccupied developed properties and finding the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And we have Community Development Director Tamian to present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
And we should open the public hearing.
This is a public meeting, so we're going to open the public meeting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Adam Atamian, Community Development Director. I'm presenting this item tonight on behalf of our co-compliance manager, who was unable to be here tonight. This item started back at the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting where the city council adopted resolution twenty-four dash forty, declaring weeds, rubbish, and refuse on parkways and private property with public nuisances on April first. As directed by that resolution, the city's weed abatement contractor completed the required public notification process to owners of vacant property subject to the city's weed abatement program. Before the council, at this point, is a consideration of a resolution authorizing the Community Development Director to address these nuisances. Following approval, I would direct the city's weed abatement contractor to initiate clearance of the vacant properties identified in the vacant property list. Those properties that failed to meet the standards by May fifteenth will be cleared by the weed abatement contractor and those lots would be subject to invoices, billing once that work is done. And with that, staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution number twenty-four dash four seven.
All right, any questions of staff? Seeing none, I'm going to.
And I will say, we don't have any public comments.
Public comments, so I'll close the public hearing and.
I need to move, I put in a motion to adopt, Jen, item twenty-four, one seventy-two. City Clerk, will you read the motion, please?
Yes. Adopt resolution number twenty-four dash forty-seven entitled The Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, ordering the Director of Community Development to abate the nuisances by having weeds, rubbish, refuse, and dirt removed from vacant properties and unoccupied developed properties within the city and notifying the state county or any other public agency and finding the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, under sections one five three zero one, one five three zero eight, and one five three two one of the SEQA Guidelines, fourteen CCR, one five three zero one H, Class One Existing Facilities, one five three zero eight, Class Eight Actions by Regulatory Agencies for Protection of the Environment, and one five three two one, Class Twenty-One Enforcement Actions by Regulatory Agencies.
Second the motion?
Second by no one.
All right.
Go ahead and start voting. The motion carries five zero.
All right, item seven D is next in order.
Adoption, this is also a public hearing, adoption of the twenty-four, twenty-five annual action plan for expenditures of community development block grant funds.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Adam, is, you again? All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're lucky.
So each year, the, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires the city to adopt an annual action plan that lists eligible projects to be carried out over the next fiscal year with the anticipated CDBG or Community Development Block Grant Funds. This year, there is a delay in the adoption of the twenty twenty-four federal budget, so HUD has not notified the city on how much we're anticipating obtaining. However, HUD has created a process to allow the city to estimate those CDBG funds in order to, for the timely submission of the annual action plan to HUD. And part of the, the resolution before you allows for the adjustment of those, those final grants once HUD announces what the city will receive. However, at this point, staff estimates that the city will receive approximately three hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five in CDBG funds. This is in addition to about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of prior year uncommitted CDBG funds that are also being allocated in this annual action plan. HUD regulations require the draft annual action plan to be available for public review for thirty days, which it has been, and the city must also hold a public hearing, which is the purpose of tonight's meeting. CDBG funding priorities fall into four general categories. These are all identified in the city's current twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four consolidated plan. They are public improvements, housing and commercial rehabilitation, public services, and program administration. For public improvements, the plan identifies some additional funding for the Maxburg Park Fountain refurbishment project. There was a phase one that was funded out of last year's program and this phase two is, is additional funding towards the construction costs associated with restoring the fountains. And this was anticipated in prior year programs. Also included is a project for the Bonita Canyon Park to install a shade structure over the playground equipment and to upgrade park pathways and landscaping. Also included is funds for housing and commercial rehabilitation, which would be achieved through our home rehabilitation loan program, which the city has had since two thousand and four, or excuse me, since nineteen ninety-four. And additionally, we have a commercial facade rehabilitation program grants that the city has administered since two thousand and four. The third is public services. Grant funding is proposed for six organizations that submitted applications. On February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, the city's Social Services Budget Committee reviewed the six applications and recommended forty-five thousand dollars in G, CDBG funding to local nonprofit organizations serving South, San Clemente residents. And then finally, a portion of the funds are proposed for administration of the CDBG program and that is up to twenty percent of the annual allocation for CDBG. One note, all of these funds are, are administered through grant management handled by city staff with reporting requirements that is reviewed by staff and then prepared for reimbursement to other city departments or the nonprofits that are receiving grants and, and other organizations that would receive the funds. So with that, staff recommends that the city council approve and adopt resolution number twenty-four dash four eight to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five annual action plan, authorize submission of that plan to HUD, accept the grant revenues once they are, once they are determined, authorize the related budget appropriations, and also authorize staff to make changes to the allocations based on the actual funding. With that, that concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I think everybody's had the opportunity to meet with either you or Andy or the city manager about this proposal, so I don't think we have any questions. Anybody have any, for, any questions?
Any comments?
We don't have any speaker comments.
No speaker comments, I'm going to close the public hearing, the public hearing is closed. Does someone want to make a motion?
Someone else to make it?
I'll move that we accept item seven D.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
A move that we accept the staff recommendation on item seven D and if the city clerk needs to read it.
Okay, and did you want to make a, a motion on your?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
I pressed it for him.
Thank you.
Well, now you made the motion.
Oh, no, I pressed it on your machine.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it.
I don't think you need the, I don't think, I don't think you need the city clerk to read it because it doesn't involve an ordinance.
It's a resolution, correct. So we have, we have a motion by council member Lefler, second by Mayor Protim Inmeyer, to adopt the resolution in question and we can move to vote on the item.
All right.
The item carries five oh for adopt resolution.
Thank you for your time this evening. Are you coming back again or are you done?
I've got to finish that item, so I have to.
Okay, all right. Unfinished business?
There's none. So the next item on the agenda is nine A under new business and this is consideration of approving two settlement agreements, accepting two conservation easements, approving an endowment agreement, and accepting three easement deeds for storm drain and associated improvements, all related to the Ariola Global Settlement Agreement and Landslide Repair Project at Villa Belina and the Shorecliffs Golf Course, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation of seven hundred thousand dollars to fund the settlements. And we have Public Works Director Reeven Storf here to answer questions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, member of the council, very briefly, staff has recommended city council approve a number of actions outlined in the agenda report related to the Ariola Settlement Agreement and Landslide Repair at Villa Belina and Shorecliffs Golf Course. The project entails construction of a seven-foot by seven-foot box culvert to improve drainage and grading in the area, which ultimately helps to improve stability, slope stability. So with that, staff's here to answer any questions you might have.
Is there any questions of staff? Well, I would just say, thank you, but particularly thank you to our city attorney who has done extraordinary work on this. This is a, a global settlement of a comprehensive issue that's been around for a decade, maybe longer, and involves many lawsuits and a settlement agreement of multiple issues. So it's good to put this behind us and I'm glad it is behind us and we can move on to other issues in this, this city. But thank you both for your, your work on this and Andy also, who does great work on this also. All right, is there?
It sounded like a motion to me.
There are no public comments.
There's no public comments, yeah. So you want to make a motion?
I think you did, didn't you?
All right, I'll make that, that's my motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Approve the staff recommendation.
Motion by Mayor Cabral, second by council member Noblock, to approve the staff recommendation and I should be able to vote on the item. Carries five oh.
All right, next item on the agenda?
Consideration of future operations of the city's beach club facility and we have Beaches Parks and Recreation Director Wiley on her way up.
Welcome back.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Samantha Wiley, Beaches Parks and Recreation Director. So this evening's item is to get direction from the city council to essentially consider the operations beyond, beyond the end of the twenty-four carats lease term at the Ole Hanson Beach Club. I think the contents of the staff report really summarize our goal here and our intent, so I will be brief, but we really are looking to plan for the future of the beach club and that's going to entail bringing the community back, giving a sense of parks and recreation, having programming there, holding community events, expanding access to the public use of the facility as well. So with this action this evening, we'll be able to communicate to twenty-four carats that at the end of their lease, we will not be renewing it and we're going to be shifting operations in-house if that's the direction from the council. I'm happy to take questions if there are any.
Is there any questions of council?
Just real quick, I know you've done an analysis and even when we shift this to in-house, it is certainly going to offer a lot more access, local access and flexibility in how we use the, the facility. Do you anticipate any big falloff on income by implementing our, our own in-house operation?
I, I think it's a give and a take. I mean, we are, we're expanding community access. I, I would be remiss if I said, you know, weddings, they, they do produce revenue, there's income in weddings and events like that. I think the Ole Hanson Beach Club can operate with weddings and special events, but on a, on a much more confined basis. You know, we can have limits to hours, we have limits on the use of sound, we, we can put all of those measures into place to ensure that we're, we're hooping some revenue. But I do think the expansion of contract classes in particular is going to be really helpful. Right now, we have access on Tuesdays only and we have yoga that runs in there from about seven AM all the way up until about eight PM and they're non-stop and their classes are full. I have watercolor, we have a lot of other folks that want to get into the facility, but we can't. It's also going to give us an opportunity to start offering some summer camps and other youth programs as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, quick, quick question, if I could follow up on Councilman Lefler's question about the revenue. I understand we're getting now around four hundred thousand dollars a year, give or take, on that facility. Before that was around two thirty. What are you anticipating money-wise when the city takes over the operations? I didn't see that in the staff report.
Yeah, I, I think, so in twenty twelve, when we closed the facility, it was around two thirty and that was our, that was our revenue. And that was in twenty twelve when the wedding industry was not nearly booming where it is today. So I anticipate that we should at least in the first couple of years make what twenty-four carats, what, what they're bringing in. That's the goal and, and we'll continue to kind of come up with some different ways to, to enhance the revenue that doesn't impact the, the neighborhood and provides community access.
Great, I agree with your, your, the concept of restricting the operations, controlling the sound, controlling the noise, controlling access, I think that's all positive, so I support this and willing to make a motion when the proper time comes.
We have public comments.
Oh, excuse me.
David Fabian, I'm sorry.
Any other, I wanted to make sure we had no other questions of staff, so let's hear from.
David Fabian, followed by Chris Butler, followed by Amanda Q., followed by Alex Haynes. David Fabian.
Good evening, Council, thank you so much for having me here today. I'm David Fabian, I'm the CFO of Twenty-four Carats. I represent, obviously, the, the leaseholder of the property right now and also the current operator of the facility. I do just want to say, I think Samantha's estimates in terms of turning over the facility to an in-house operation are extremely optimistic overall. Twenty-four Carats has been in that space for the last eight years, we've been an extremely close partner of the city and we've significantly outperformed every expectation of that lease in terms of not only the base rents, but the commissions and everything else that goes along with it. In more recent times, we have. In more recent times, we have gotten a very small minority of the community that is disappointed in some of the noise levels and things like that from the community, and we've immediately worked with members of the council here, as well as the city manager and, and other stakeholders, to immediately address those concerns and have gone above and beyond to fulfill our obligations. So it's our recommendation that we would very much like to abstain from this vote, to delay it. There's still two and a half years left on the existing lease, and no need to make an immediate decision about this, this property at this point in time. 24 Carats has been in business for the last 20 years. We built a reputation around creating memorable experiences for your community, and Samantha talked about how this has really become a place where the community is not invited. I would actually argue that we've expanded this community nationwide. We host destination weddings for people from out of state, where we create a halo effect for other businesses, other hospitality businesses in the community, whether that's restaurants, hotels, cafes, convenience stores, of all the different tourism and, and people that come through the city of San Clemente. So it's our desire that we continue to operate well beyond the 2026 end of the lease. We want to continue to be partners, very good partners with the city of San Clemente, and, you know, if, if there is a process beyond that, we'd love it to go out to a more traditional RFP process and beyond, and continue to find the best situation that works out for all the stakeholders involved. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir.
Any other?
Chris Butler, followed by Amanda Q, followed by Alex Haynes.
Evening, Council. Thank you for your time. I'll just say real quick, I didn't plan to speak anything about 24 Carats, but since they came and said that they're accommodating the, the noise complaints and working with the city, I'd say that's absolutely not correct. I mean, as recent as, you know, the last weddings, this, this last weekend, were still the same problems, still same sound issues, still same P A. systems blasting into the houses. So I understand they make money, but I have full confidence that, just like we're talking about with the pickleball facilities, there are ways to generate revenues, hold events, community festivals that do generate a lot of money that go well beyond what potential wedding can make. You know, it just comes with planning, and there's definitely a lot of demand for the space. That being said, the North Beach Community Association, as well as myself, as a resident and business owner in San Clemente and North Beach, support notifying 24 Carats of no lease extension and the city taking back operation of the Ole Hanson Beach Club and bringing it back to its past luster and intended purpose while showcasing it as a community center and centerpiece. In the last year, the city council, the city staff, and the community have and are making great strides to revitalize North Beach. These efforts have attracted successful weekend non-wedding revenue and community generating events. There has been cleanup and beautification efforts, security has greatly improved, and there are families on the beach again. There are efforts to bring in new sand, and a new hotel is on the way. Reclaiming and utilizing the Ole Hanson Beach Club as a community asset is a crucial step in continuing this trend. The beach club is the nucleus of North Beach with a strong heritage in community events, activities, and school-sponsored dances and events, too. We are confident under the city, in this Wiley's purview, the city could thrive immediate intended mandate while continuing, continuing to host responsible weddings and private events and generating other sources of revenue while allowing more time for community activities and community building events, while more responsibly utilizing the city asset and community gym. We would suggest the following, a schedule like other parks and rec departments do for other community assets around the, the county. Two weekends available for weddings or private events, with wedding lottery prioritizing residents throughout the year and making it more affordable for residents. One weekend for community events or activities, not, besides the activities go on daily, and then one weekend dark so the local residents can enjoy the lawn, and there's a time when there's no sound, and it can be just enjoyed as a architectural piece. Additionally, having better utilization of the space during daytime hours for daytime events, meeting spaces, or public services, substations would contribute to greatly needed daytime foot traffic in the area, increasing traffic for adjacent businesses as well as deterring bad actors from loitering. As we've shown from past events and over the last year, the M B C A can throw a great community event, and for given opportunity, we help program engaging community events and activities at Ole Hanson Beach Club. We appreciate what you're doing.
All right, thank you for your comments. And any other?
Amanda Q, followed by Alex Haynes.
I'm really happy. Thank you so much, councilmembers, for having this on the agenda. Thank you for reclaiming Ole Hanson Beach Club to the residents of San Clemente. Ole Hanson donated the Ole Hanson Beach Club and the green space to the residents of San Clemente. And there was a problem in the past where a resident could not enjoy being in the lawn of Ole Hanson Beach Club, and that was a terrible situation, and it, it was very, very a bad situation, and it was an unfortunate situation. I remember when 24 Carats wanted to extend their lease the last time, and there was public opposition to that. And so it was, it's been a long time that people have been spoken, have spoken about that, and I really liked what Chris Butler had mentioned about it, and I really think that having this opportunity, coming back to the residents, I think it's really important. I remember talking to Senator Pat Bates regarding this exclusive control that 24 Carats had because they were the only catering company that anybody could use versus having a choice. And I think that was very important to really, to keep in mind that, you know, people need choices, people need to realize, oh, can I use a different, a different venue, a different restaurant, and I really support that. So I'm glad that Beaches Parks and Recreation are, are going to be doing that, and hopefully that we could have that revenue in that. So thank you so much, Samantha. And I did want to say that you were very helpful with the pickleball community, and so I do, I do know that. Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Last.
Alex Haynes.
Last speaker.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. I know it's late, and I'll be brief. I'm a resident of San Clemente's for over half a century, and learned to swim at Ole Hanson Beach Club. My kids learned to play the piano at Ole Hanson Beach Club. I have some great memories of that particular place, and it's a real treasure. I know we've always, everything is transactional, and I get it, I'm the businessman. I've had a business here that's been around for 75 years, not me, but not everything is transactional. So there is a happy medium between revenue and what is more important for the community. And I think we've found some balance there, and unfortunately, having control by one entity, one place, takes away from the community. Yes, there's other people that come in and enjoy that location, but really, it's the community's house. So I hope that you'll find with the recommendation of staff here that we get this back to the community and get away from so much of the transactional and revenue part of it. We want to make money, I get it, I can't be around without it, but I think there's a happy medium where we can provide the community and the venue with what they need. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Let's, do you want to make a motion, or is there?
I was just going to make a quick.
We'll have discussion on, on your motion, or?
Oh, well.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure, I, yeah, I can.
I've already hit the motion, but I can withdraw.
Oh, go ahead, now go ahead.
Okay, well, I will make a motion that we approve staff recommendation and adopt resolution 24-63. And, you know, just in commenting on that motion, I, you know, we, we've been very gracious and, and helpful to 24 Carats. When COVID hit, we, we gave them extensions, we gave them concessions on rent, so forth. And then because of the leapfrogging effect of their scheduling, we gave them additional years. So I, I just think that, that asset is so important to our community and one that I think has been troublesome for many residents with the noise and the restrictions on the grass and the use of the overall facility, that I just think it's, it's a jewel of the city that I think this city can properly manage, so that's why I make the motion.
Yeah, and just.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll, somebody's second, okay. So just another comment is, in fairness to 24 Carats, this, to me, is as much about the fact is we're outgrowing our space for recreation and all the activities that we do. And in three years, or two and a half years, whenever this is up, it's going to be even more of a crunch for us. So we, we need the space also. Unfortunately, we don't have that many historic buildings in, in town, and we've kind of let them go, and I think we need to reel them all back in so we, we can have control over it and enhance the quality of life for our residents here.
Any other discussion?
I also learned how to swim at Ole Hanson. I took some swim lessons there, several of you in the audience did, and I, I just remember growing up, what a wonderful benefit to the community Ole Hanson Beach Club was. And thank you to 24 Carats for doing your, your part during this time period, but I, I think Mr. Lefler, Councilmember Lefler is correct in this in saying it is time to bring it back to the community. We are needing more space, we want to have areas to do our activities throughout the week. I want to have my kids be able to use that facility to do their classes, to learn how to play piano there, to have their birthday parties there. And I, I think, you know, it's, it's great that other people from across the nation are, are coming to our town, but I'd really, really like to see our citizens use that space even more. So again, thank you, 24 Carats, for, for what you've done in this time period, but I'm, I'm excited to see this reclaimed back for the city.
All right. I have, yeah, I, I'd like to just make sure, for the record at least, that we, we, and I'm going to support this, but that, that we, we all sort of understand how this transpired over time. The re, the rejuvenation of Ole Hanson Beach Club was quite expensive. In fact, it was five times more expensive than it was supposed to, and so we were, we were in a, a cash crunch. Frankly, 24 Carats stepped up and was an excellent partner financially, far exceeded the annual revenue projections, and that was a major, and I see Jake Brown, our finance guy, sort of nodding in the back, and this is like important stuff, right? I mean, we needed that money, and 24 Carats came through for us. We did help during COVID, but then 24 Carats also worked with us to make sure that the revenue continued even under those very difficult circumstances. Food is incredible, first-class operation. So, and also, logistically, it's been incredible benefit, taking this off the city's plate in, in a time of, of difficult staffing and managing it very efficiently and effectively. The, the trouble is on the quality-of-life side. That, that's where, as we had a speaker talk about, the financial benefit and the logistical benefit run into the adverse effect on our community. And the reality is, it's beyond just that it would be nice for our residents to be able to use that, that, that's true. But it's also, and I think maybe more importantly, it's, it's actually been a detriment to the community because we haven't gotten, unfortunately, responsiveness from 24 Carats to address those concerns that we've heard repeatedly, and it wasn't just a small, small minority. In fact, it was probably almost everybody in, in North Beach, at least that are right in that area. So that's, that's what brings us to this point. It's unfortunate because, because 24 Carats has been an excellent partner, and I think we give them incredible recommendation for, you know, for anybody that's looking for a first-class operator. But for that location, right next to a bunch of residents and, and a, a, a place of monumental historical importance, as so many speakers have said, it's, I think, it's time, unfortunately for 24 Carats, for us to make a change. It, it certainly isn't about your operations, isn't about the financial benefits, which would have been wonderful for the city. It's really about that other element, which is very difficult to control because, again, that location is right next to so many homes. So please take that back to, to the crew and thank them for being so gracious with us and, and, and good partners, but it's just the situation that it's, I don't think we can continue in the current situation because of these repeat situations. So I wanted to say that, and I, I certainly will support, I think, the, the motion, though. All right, I, I concur with everything that my colleague said.
Motion carries 5-0 to adopt resolution 24-63.
All right, next item.
Next item on the agenda is item 9C, consideration of a policy concerning council support or opposition for state and federal legislation. And this was agendized by Mayor Protim Inmire with the support of Councilmember Duncan, so there is not a staff report on this item.
Yes.
Do you want the comments first, or do you talk on that?
I guess you could give your report, a report on what it is, because we, nobody knows what it is.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. My purpose in, in bringing this up is, is there's been some instances in the past where letters of opposition or in support of certain legislation has been brought up and has been voted on in three-two situations. And so the entire council is then put together in this letter to the state, to the federal government, and I have trouble consciousness trying to put my name to these letters that I don't support, and I know my constituents don't support. I would very much like to see a policy where, if we want to write a letter as a council, we would need unanimous support to do that. If we don't receive unanimous support, individual council members can still write a letter and sign their names to this, but it would not be enacted as a, a full city policy. So that, that's my proposition with that. I'm hopeful that, that I'll get support with the council on it.
All right. So do we have any public comments?
We do have one comment. Amanda Q.
Thank you for explaining that agenda item because there wasn't a tab where you could, you know, talk about that. And I, this is just a reminder, next slide, please. You know, Assemblymember Rocky Chavez proposed AB 382. Next slide, please. And this is, there's Jean James there in the back, and this is just only a portion of the people that attended the, sorry, I know, I'm laughing because Councilmember Duncan is saying, but yes, Jean James is really tall there, and you can tell that's him. But anyway, so a lot of people came out for support. Next slide, please. Rocky Chavez stepped up and introduced bill to stop the TSA from making any more. This was supported by also Tim Brown, Lori Dunshock, Kathleen Ward, and Kerry Ferguson from San Juan Capistrano City Council. Next slide, please. AB, Bill Bro also introduced AB 331, as introduced, which is, existing law establishes the state highway system throughout the state and designate state rail route 241 from state route 5, and it would delete from that state highway system the portion of state route 24 south of the city of San Clemente to Oso Parkway east of the city of Mission Viejo. Next slide, please. Also, he also proposed AB 1273, I forgot to mention that. Senator Bates introduced 1373, and it did get some good response at the Senate floor and the Senate Transportation Committee. Next slide, please. Also, she's introduced SB 760, which would delete from the state highway system a portion of state 241 from state route 5 south to the city of San Clemente again. Next slide, please. Then Senator Pat Bates introduced 761, and I know 760 and 761 basically were taken off because the O C T A Ranch of Mission Viejo and the city of San Clemente went into an agreement, a cooperative agreement for that. So those bills were withdrawn from Senator Pat Bates. And then we have, next slide, please, Lori Davies, Assemblymember Lori Davies introduced AB 882, which would expedite the application process for locality, locality or nonprofit to apply for climate-ready grants from the state from 120 days down to 45 days, so thankful of that in that past. And then she also introduced a Assembly Bill 966, Division of Boding and Waterways Report to Legislature Shoreline Erosion Control and Public Beach Programs. So this is just a sample of, of all the legislation that were done by our legislators for our benefit, and that's why we really need to keep on supporting our representatives because they are proposing this for our benefit, and so keep that in mind as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any questions or any debate? Yes.
Yeah, I have a comment. You know, the, the recommendation that this policy change is required to prevent the city. You know, the recommendation that this policy change is required to prevent the city from weighing in on important public policy matters relating to state and federal issues of which we don't have a majority should not be adopted. Government doesn't act by a majority, by unanimity, it acts by majority. And it's kind of disappointing to me that we have to remind several of our colleagues that the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution and the California State Constitution, Section 1, Article 3A, requires and gives the citizens and its representatives a right to petition the government for redress of grievances. It's not only important, but it's imperative that our citizens and our civic leaders and every level of government speak out in favor of those issues that are beneficial to our citizens and speak out against those matters that are harmful to our citizens. In the past, we've seen a plethora of corrupting and destructive policies being put in place by those currently in control of Sacramento and Washington and even our local school board. Of course, not all of us agree and will agree on every issue, but it's, and it would be strange if we did, but we should be proud and appreciate that this council has weighed in on a number of crucial issues affecting the citizens of San Clemente. We've considered resolutions concerning the preservation of our rights under the Second Amendment, the recent Proposition 1 tax and its tax implications, a number of state legislative bills, or Sacramento has sought to usurp local zoning and administrative and regulatory authority. We've supported federal bills for issues like offshore drilling and the one that you recently brought up, Mark, to give federal mortgage money away in the trillions of dollars to teachers, nurses, and other people. A resolution, we've also adopted a resolution in response to, we've also considered, we didn't adopt it, we considered a resolution in response to the unfettered right in the state to kill onboard children in mere seconds before they're born and even after they're partially born. And according to some in power, this power to kill infants should be allowed to remain even for a significant period of time after the child's born. So those issues do affect us. We've also considered issues that don't get a lot of attention, that are not impacting the city's operating budget, but do affect San Clemente parents, like preventing San Clemente parents of minor children to be notified when their minor children are being encouraged and supported by school personnel to alter their God-given gender by surgically castrating the boys, lopping off the breasts of the girls, and giving dangerous and permanently life-altering surgeries and hormone blockers. Issues like this are vigorously championed by those in Sacramento and Washington, aimed by our local school board. And apparently, they seem to want to create a multifaceted dystopian society totally alien to the values and freedoms that we all thrived under until recently. And Mr. Enmire, you're aware of that because you were at that meeting, not as a council member, but you were there supporting those folks and lending your gravitas to that effort. There are also other important issues that we've considered, like involving our state and federal government by encouraging and financial reporting with our tax dollars. Our government is supporting the invasion of our South U.S. border by millions of terrorists, drug dealers, and sex traffickers. And when citizens say, we'd like, we'd like our government to address this, we hear the cries of, well, you're just racist for wanting to do this. We have had a resolution urging Sacramento to implement reasonable and rational voter integrity measures, which were, which was opposed by several members of this council, one of whom, Mr. Duncan, is currently seeking office in Sacramento to apparently give his support to this, to this agenda. Let's not kid ourselves. Consideration of these and other important issues do not hinder the way this body addresses potholes, traffic congestion, beach sand, and other issues vital to our quality of life. But it is also vital for our citizens to know where elected officials stand on these important issues. More importantly, if these larger issues aren't properly addressed with input from our local officials, then our other local priorities are in great peril. It's clear to many that the mantra of the socialist running Sacramento and Washington is, for our cities and their local representatives, their message to us is to sit down, shut up, hold on while they pursue their perilous policies at blinding speed. They insist that we remain silent and that our nation drift further and further into a dystopian world that is barely recognizable. Policy changes like this that you've supported, you've recommended, Mark, would be an attempt to silence the citizens and their representatives. So my vote on your issue is a resounding no.
May.
Counter, somebody's, or wait your turn.
Let's have everybody speak first and then.
All I want to, I think it is appropriate.
Yeah.
I just want to make it really, really clear here that this proposition would not silence anyone's voice, would not silence anyone on council's voice. You are still allowed to make the propositions, you're still allowed to propose the letters to be written, you can still sign the letters in support or not in support. All it's saying is that if someone doesn't want to sign on to that letter, they don't have to. So in essence, but if the way is continuing, if I'm in dissent, my voice is silenced, my freedoms are taken away because I can't speak against those things, and I'm lumped into agreement of a policy that I don't agree with. So this isn't about trying to suppress some agenda or something rather that I, there are a lot of tangents there to go off of. It's mainly about, hey, Cam, let's stick to the things that we can all agree on, write those letters. If we're in disagreement, that's fine, we can still write those letters, just not make it a city policy of writing those letters. Because when we do this, when we're in dissent, half of the citizens of this town may not agree with that letter that's being sent. And to sign a letter saying we all are in agreement on that is just a lie, and those voices are being silenced. So that's where I'm at on this.
All right. I appreciate it. Any other comments?
All right, I'll go next. Steve, that pre-written, rambling, incoherent, politically-charged response is exactly why we need this policy, to be quite honest with you. The residents don't care about all of those things you were talking about. They care about sand on the beaches, they care about their kids being safe, they care about their school being, being good, they care about their, their homes rising in value, and they care about money in their pockets. They don't care about all those other things. It's exactly why we need a policy like this, so that only those really important things, like the toll road, are policies that the city is going to sign on to unanimously. And this will be a way to make sure that we don't go down the road of having politically-charged statements being made on behalf of the entire city council when the entire city council does not agree on them. It will, it will be a great way to funnel down to those key issues that our residents really actually do care about. So thank you for your response, actually, because I think it solidifies the reason, the exact reason that we need this policy. And thank you, Mark, for introducing it.
I can go first if you want.
Well, I could respond to the comments that have been directed to me. This is, this is not politically-charged rhetoric. This is about how this city makes decisions. This isn't something where you have to agree. You don't agree. We vote three to two, four to one. This policy, issues promoted by this city council are done by a majority vote, not by unanimous vote. When we support something that, a resolution that passes three to two, the two people that voted no aren't bound by the neck with a Buddha on their neck saying, you're supporting this. Clearly, they don't. Clearly, the public knows they don't. But it's important to know where people stand on the invasion of our southern border, on the crime issue that's coming to San Clemente with the fentanyl problem that you mentioned earlier that's killing, and we had a bus in San Clemente that had the ability to kill 10 million people, many of whom could have been San Clementans had that bus not occurred. This isn't political rambling, Chris. This is an issue of making a statement where this community and this nation wants to stand. Now, you may not agree, and some of your constituents may not agree, but I gotta tell you, if a majority of the people on this board support a resolution supporting one issue or another, that maybe suggests to me that maybe even a majority of the city does support these issues. You may not, and the people in Sacramento clearly don't, and the people in Washington clearly don't, but a lot of people in this town do. So it's not where you can, where you're forced to be in agreement, because you're not, none of us are, you know that. But the issues of the transgender stuff that our school board's doing, the impact of crime by an open border, the Sacramento usurpation of our rights that we talk about almost weekly, those are important issues. That's not political rambling. That's the stuff that our government's made of and the stuff that we need to address. And have the courage to address it, not run and try to hide from the issues by saying, well, I don't want to talk about it because I don't want to have to let people know where I stand. We need to have courage and stand up for what we believe and not be ashamed of the values that we hold.
You keep proving my point. He was talking to me.
Yeah, he did talk to you, so.
You've pre-proven my point, Steve, because now we've wasted a bunch more city time where we need to be getting back to the city business, right? And this is the road we go down unless we have some guidelines that focus us in only on those core, really important issues for the community and not the, not the border and not national policies and not, not things that are outside the purview of the city council. We have more than enough on our plate to just work on city stuff, right? And if you, if you feel so important about those other issues that are non-city related and you want to talk about those instead of city business, you could write the dang letter yourself on city letterhead and express it all you want, just like Mark said. But don't tie us to long, ever-ending discussions about stuff that doesn't matter for everyday San Clemente residents. Let's get back to sand and things that really do matter for us and get out of this other stuff.
The things that matter to us are being addressed and haven't been hindered one minute by any discussion of the.
It's been by about 20 minutes so far.
Hold on, hold on, we're going to speak one at a time, and Mark is.
Again, I just want to emphasize, and I'm really trying to bring this point home, no one is stopping anyone from talking about these issues. If those issues are important to you, then by all means, you can talk about them, you can bring them up for us to debate them up on here, if you would like. All I'm saying is that if a letter is to be written, that if it does not have unanimous consent, we don't have to sign on to it. There are letters that have been proposed that I have to put my name to, even though I disagree with it. And so that's what this is about. And again, we can still have those debates. Nothing's stopping us from having that freedom of speech, and if it's not passed in a unanimous consent, you can still write that letter with the other people who are in consent on the dais. All I'm asking is that I don't have to sign that letter, too, and that it's not indicative of the entire city council.
All right. Let me give you my comments, unless you want to go first?
No, you're more than welcome.
Okay, first, yeah. I just say, unfortunately, the motion will have no teeth because at any time, any three members can still vote to approve a letter if that's their choice, despite a resolution that says we can't. So we could vote tonight, say, no, let's have this veto power of one member, but tomorrow we could, three of us could say, yeah, us three here could say, let's write this letter, and it would be approved because any three members on this body can do that, because we run this committee by a majority. So three votes on this committee is majority, and three votes gets to decide what happens with the letter. And to go to a single-vote veto, I just can't approve of because that would give the power to one person, any one member, to say, I don't support this. And I know, we don't know what this next city council will look like, and I may be that one person, I don't know. But I think the way the system works right now, it's a three-majority decides, a three-member majority decides which letters. Hopefully, we'll use our discretion and bring issues that are relevant to our community and that have, we've been asked to address by our community. And so I cannot support your motion, but because I think three votes on any issue should, should guide us.
Okay, I'm going to talk slow because Andy ran out of the room, and I actually had a question for him, so.
He's back.
Oh, my God, thank goodness. I almost wish I would have had a staff report on this, this matter, but you know, I, like when you look at, and I agree with Mark and Chris on that, I would like to try to keep it to San Clemente issues when we do these kind of letters. I would like to try to. I'm not saying that we have to regulate it that, but I would like to try to. I've been, I'll call the swing vote a couple of times on a couple of different sides of different issues, and you know, when you lose and the letter goes through in support of something, you know, you go, well, that's, that's the way it goes. When you win on something and you say Proposition 1, which was, I consider that a local issue, you know, that we wrote that in opposition to Proposition 1, guess it didn't do that much good because, you know, it passed, and I hope.
It narrowed the margin.
Narrow margin, yeah, yeah, we narrowed the margin. And I hope Proposition 1 is successful, and I'm all about it, you know, now that it's passed. I, I'm not sure, this is what I wanted to ask Andy, on the, on the proposition of two people, three people vote for, to send a letter on any issue, whether it's city-related, not city-related, just something that three people want, and three people sign that letter and two are not compelled to, is that a common practice in your history of all city managed DUMB you've done?
City managed DUMB.
That wasn't D U M B, that was D O M.
You know, it's been my understanding that no one's compelled to sign the letter. So, except at times, in certain circumstances, the mayor must sign the letter, depends on certain circumstances, but most of the time, no one's compelled to sign the letter. And there have been letters, even since I've been here, that have had five names on them and not all of those, not all of them have been signed.
Okay. Well, then, with that being said, again, when we vote as a body, I'm fine, I'll sign the letter, because I'll say, three of us, three of us passed it and signed it. I'm not with the politicization, politicalization of so many items on here, and I, if somebody doesn't want to sign a letter.
You have to.
I have no problem with that, and I think that's sometimes the message that, that's the message that you send.
I agree, and if, Mark, your proposition is just to not compel council members to sign, number one, they're not compelled now, and number two, I agree with you, if someone doesn't want to send a letter, we can't compel them to sign anything. So I kind of agree with that concept, but I do agree that for resolutions and issues of support or non-support, this council does act as a majority, not necessarily unanimous.
I see what you're saying. I also have seen this council, and as you have made clear, that there are issues that aren't, they are here to divide our city, more so than to unite us on the things that we should be focusing on. And it's a shame that we keep bringing up these issues that we shouldn't really be talking about on a federal and state level. And again, I, this is why I think this proposition is necessary.
All right. We have no staff recommendation, but someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to create a policy, have staff create a policy that would determine that letters cannot be sent without, from the city council without full unanimous consent.
Okay. Is there a second?
He has to press the button.
Press your button. And Madam Clerk, did you?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a, I'm sorry, I will second. Okay, I wanted to make a second.
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion. You're going to have to tell me, oh, do I push my button now?
You can push your button, yes.
Okay, my substitute motion would be that we have a policy that all council members do not have to sign a letter, whether it be a letter of resolution or a letter of support, that we don't have to sign. I didn't know that before, now I know, but I'd like to make it a policy to make it easier for you to do that. I think it would have made it, I would have made some different decision on signing in the past.
So your motion is that letters of opposition or support of any particular item doesn't have to be signed by all five council members if a council member simply objects?
Correct.
I second that motion.
All right, okay.
Would you like to second it on your?
On your, yeah, he did.
Got it, just came up.
So we have a substitute motion on the floor, is there any discussion on that?
Just a quick question. Can we vote yes on both of these motions?
I think the substitute.
I just said, can we vote on both of these motions? Okay, one, one motion doesn't negate the other motion.
Correct.
Okay.
So you'd like to bifurcate the two?
Excuse me, would you like to bifurcate the two?
Substitute motion.
But substitute goes first, but you're asking if the substitute passes?
If the substitute passes, can we still then vote on the original?
So you'd like to bifurcate, okay, so yes, we can do that, if we'd like two separate motions.
I'm not so sure about that. Let's ask the attorney.
So the substitute motion is voted on first.
Yes.
If the substitute motion gets rid of, the first motion makes it moot, then you wouldn't vote on it? The way I'm hearing this, it. The way I'm hearing this, it wouldn't necessarily moot out the first one, so you would vote on them in order.
All right, let's do that then. We do the substitute first.
Okay, so we're on the substitute motion, so go ahead and start voting, and that is a motion by Councilmember Lefler, second by Councilmember.
Does everyone understand what that is? You don't have to sign it?
This is my motion, I'll say that I do.
Well, are you sure?
No, I think I am.
Okay, all right.
All right, now record that vote. That carries 4-0 with Councilmember Duncan voting no.
All right. And the first motion is Ann Meyer's motion that.
Letters to Senate or to, sorry.
Any letter.
Yeah, any letter, any letter sent have unanimous support.
Has to have unanimous support.
Yeah, a letter about legislation.
Would have to have unanimous support to send a letter.
And, yes, to have the city. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so there's the second part that.
For every three votes we send the letter, not everybody has to sign it.
That's what we just.
That's not his motion.
That was your motion.
We already passed it.
This is a policy of if we want to send a letter on behalf of the city.
Has to be approved by all five.
Unanimous, okay.
Okay, you can vote on that.
Do you understand it?
I don't.
You need unanimous consent, we, all five of us have to agree before we send the letter out on.
Whether it's signed or not.
Whether it's signed or not.
Motion fails 2-3 with Councilmember No Block, Councilmember Lefler, and Mayor Cabral voting no.
All right, so next item is we've taken that, we've stricken that, right?
90 was pulled from the agenda, so we're moving on to the consent calendar.
All right.
Do council members like to pull any items?
Not I. Anybody want to pull anything now? Do we have any?
Don't have any speakers, so we can.
All right, let's vote on it then.
I'll make a motion to move the balance, but I don't see the motion button.
It's there. You've gotten out of it.
Okay, someone else make the motion.
Mayor Cabral made the motion.
All right.
Second by Councilmember Duncan.
All right, let's vote.
No, there's no card up here for 10D. Right, no, I don't have any, I'm out of speaker, I don't have any more speaker cards. Carries 5-0.
Next item.
Yes, let me just get there, one second. Oral Communications Part 2.
All right, do we have any?
We do not have any speaker cards.
All right, next item.
Future agenda items.
Any future agenda items? Next item.
Hold on, I actually have one. It's come to my attention that we are experiencing a backlog in some of our planning committee and design review processes and I'm wondering if I can get some support from city council, from our council members, to bring back a staff report on how this process works from beginning to end of, let's say a hotel wants to be, wants to be created in our city, how does that process happen? Where might be some of the roadblocks that happen? How could we, we look at making it a little bit less cumbersome for those who want to create something or something?
Isn't there a fast-track thing that's already been established to track that and make it quicker?
The staff does have a program, I went through it, I think Laura Ferguson went through it and others have, where we sit with the planning staff and they simply walk us through the process.
Yeah, I think there's still those, a few other things that are creating some hiccups along the way, some headaches along the way, that it might be good just for us to take a gander at. It might be worth some time.
Are there specific issues that?
Yeah, you know, sometimes we, you know, I don't know if I want to say or not, or if it'd be better to.
Yeah, maybe, maybe if you don't mind me interrupting, maybe you and I could sit down, we could flush out some of those specific ones just so we don't, you know, wrongfully name any applicants or any process right now. Maybe you and I could flush out maybe the best way to give the city council that kind of information, even if it is sitting down with our staff and kind of going through this. But maybe that's a better approach just until we look at names on applications and some of those.
And then if you wanted to bring it back specifically on what you, instead of painting it with a broad brush, if you and Andy could talk and then bring back something specific, then.
Yeah, that sounds, and I know, you know, the planning commission, all those commissions, if you had a chance to sit down and talk to them, which I know at some point in time you have the time, it's really worth it because it's something else. So, all right, any other matters? We already.
Are we at council member reports or something? Are we out of the agenda part?
No, no, no. We haven't gone to that. No, we haven't gone to that. We're at.
So if we don't have any more future.
We have reports.
Items, and the next item on the agenda is scheduling of meetings to interview and appoint individuals to serve on various commissions and committees. And Mayor and Council, before you tonight, is a staff report letting you know that we have several terms for commissions and committees that are set to expire June 30th of 2024. 22 individuals' terms on commissions and committees expire and then with the resignation of a coastal advisory committee member, we also have an opening for a one-year term, which would expire on June 30th, 2025. So council's decision tonight is to either direct the city clerk to advertise and fill the positions and set, I would recommend, two interview dates because we'll have quite a few applications, quite a few applicants to interview. Or if the council chooses to allow current commission and committee members whose terms are set to expire the opportunity to stay on their respective commissions and committees, I could contact them, see if they're interested, and then report back to council with a list of those who don't wish to reapply and it would shorten the list.
Well, as cumbersome as it is, I think if they want to be on the committee or commission again, they need to come back and interview and not be a legacy. I mean, we might decide that there's some really great people that should be sitting on a committee, but there won't be room because the incumbent is, you know, got a place locked in. I don't think we've ever locked them in before, you've just had to come down and interview again. Again, I know it takes some time, but how do you tell all the residents that are interested, like the last ones that were really looking to be on a committee or commission, well, no, you can't even apply because the same people are sitting on there for eight or 10 years, so.
Grudgingly agree.
Yeah.
Do we have to take a vote on that or?
We'll vote, but I would like to, if you have a moment, I think we should schedule the two council interview dates now. Page four of your agenda report is the city council meeting calendar or agenda calendar and perhaps we could look at a couple of dates in June.
So you are aware I'm gone from June 5th until June 17th?
That's not approved.
Yes, we're going to vote you.
You have to allow you to come in. You have to tell Stacy as you're not going to, not going to the way this year, sorry.
All right, so seven, week of 17th to 21st?
Yes.
What were those dates, I'm sorry?
The week of June 17th through the 21st.
We have a council meeting on the 18th?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll be coming back on the 17th, so.
So you can, I mean, should we do one before the council meeting, at least one session of it? Just make it a long day, maybe?
On the 18th?
Yeah.
Perfect, I'll be jet-lagged.
Perfect.
That's the way to do these.
But you won't be, you won't have school, which would.
No, school's out.
So, so we could start earlier if everybody else could.
I actually don't think I'm in town.
There's always got to be one.
So.
19th, 20th to 21st.
I get back on the 20th.
You're going to miss the 18th meeting?
No, I'll be here for the 18th.
Well, that's what I mean, can we do one on the 18th?
Before the meeting?
Before the meeting.
Yeah, 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 I could do that.
Okay.
So the 18th is one day.
Well. Can you do the 18th?
I could do the 18th, but I, I mean, if we can, I would try and do one day. I mean, unless we can't start, I mean, if we start at.
It depends on how many people apply, we don't.
Well, but it's going to be a lot, I mean, we have to anticipate that, but, well, how early could we start?
Well, if, if nobody has a holdup, we could start as early as 9:00 AM if, or 10:00 AM. I mean, we don't have to do an afternoon meeting. We can set the time if.
I'm not thinking that.
We can do 6:00 AM on.
Yeah, there you go, 6:00 AM.
But working the right direction.
That'll shorten the applicant pool.
Here's just a thought, I'm going to throw it out there, what if there's a way that we read through all the applicants, we have, you know, we're familiar with all their applications, and then we can say, "These are the people we would like to interview."
It's got to be public, doesn't it?
I mean, individually, could we say that?
No.
You, what you could do and what you've done in the past, what council has done in the past, it does have to be a public process. You will have those applications in advance and you could say, "I don't have any questions for this particular candidate," but it would need to be done in a public setting and then council would need to vote on each person brought forward.
Yeah, they've got to have their 20 minutes or whatever it is.
Could choose to not ask them questions, you could say, "I'm familiar with you, I read your application."
Let's start at 1:00 PM and try and knock it all out.
And 1:00 PM on June 18th? That would be, if we had a closed session, that would give you four hours.
Works for me.
Okay.
Exactly.
Great, I will advertise for that.
All right, next item.
The council, council subcommittee updates.
What time did we say? 2, 1:00 PM?
1:00 PM.
No, I think there are no, we sort of did a reporting earlier.
And we've discussed council member comments earlier in the meeting, so next up is city attorney.
I have to say, it was kind of actually nice to do the council comments when people were actually here.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that might be something we think about, right?
No, I think it was.
It's just sort of, we're always just talking to the wall.
All right, we do it at 10:30 at night and everybody's here.
Maybe we can change the agenda to.
Well, let's, I'll take a look at that.
Can I throw in just one real comment that I forgot to make earlier, I was so overwhelmed by the crowd here, is I want to give a shout out to the North Beach Community Association that runs a vegan pop-up at North Beach next to Landers. I'm not a vegan, I went last, it's the first Saturday of every month, it's going to continue, I'm not a vegan, but I had some vegan cookies that were incredible and I saw some other food that was pretty interesting, they have music there, it's a pretty cool kind of community event. If you have a chance to stop off the first Saturday of a month down there at North Beach, I think it's worth the time.
The vegan lasagna is pretty good, too.
Yeah, there was some good-looking food there, for sure.
Yeah, all right.
City attorney update.
Thank you, I just wanted to say I, last month, celebrated my one-year anniversary with the city and I thank the city council for giving me the opportunity to be the city attorney and it really is a pleasure to serve the city of San Clemente.
Thank you for that one year.
City manager's up next, but.
The city manager does have a report and he went to go get it.
Okay, well, is there, let's see, do we have something else we could fill the time in with?
Not agendized, so we.
Yeah, really.
A little bit of bustus if we try to talk about.
Yeah, any birthday shout-outs?
I have a controversial federal issue I'd like to discuss here. Can we get that on the, can we get that on the agenda?
Hey, you could put up my police pictures again.
Was that really you in those pictures, or?
It's 100%.
It was really.
That was 40 years ago.
I was, I was young once.
Life has been tough, yeah.
All right.
Well, so three, I can't even say what goes into a bar, I can't even tell a joke anymore.
Yeah.
Three, three people. They go into a bar and.
Three council members go into a bar, it's a ground act violation.
No, da-da-da.
Bum.
All right, then we should.
How here we go.
Oh, wait, wait, okay. That was close, we were about to close the meeting. That's you.
Mayor and Council, I have a couple of contracts I need to go over with you. Catch my breath. The first one is WSP USA Environmental and Infrastructure Incorporated, providing for golf course irrigation inspection for $5,630. Viatron Systems Incorporated, the Second Amendment, providing for electronic document imaging for $50,000. Nino and more geotechnical and environmental science consultants, providing for the Prima de Sescha Canata Canal wall stabilization. That's a mouthful right there. At Granda Vista, $14,127. Joshua Grading and Excavation, providing for West Mariposa Point Sewer Line Manhole Repair, $16,565. And Micro Baker International for providing for Prima de Sescha Canata Channel Wall Stabilization at Granda Vista, $20,735.
Thank you.
If we're at adjournment, can I do my adjournment?
Yeah, you have to press the button.
I'm, I'm, I got, no, I don't press a button, do I? Oh, I guess I do.
Can I do that really quickly? I just see Captain Shane Mulback there. I had an opportunity to ride along with Station 60, it was fantastic, thank you for making that possible, it was a really great opportunity, so.
Thank you. We, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in the memory of Joseph Jedediah Martin, who passed away as a result of a traffic accident, March 23rd, 2024. JJ is survived by his mother Sarah, father Saul, and three siblings. Our thoughts and prayers go out to his family and friends. Next, the regular city council meeting is scheduled to take place on May 7th, 2024. Closed session will begin at 5:00 PM and the regular business meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. The meeting will take place at the council chambers located at 9, 10, Caia Negocio, second floor, San Clemente.
Caia Negocio, all right.
Do we have a second? Motion by Lefler, second, second by No Block. Go ahead and start voting. Carries 5-0, that was a close call. We got it.
All right, thank you all. All right, thank you all.